Okay, it looks like we have everyone on.
Thank you, Faith. I see some more connecting to audio, so I'm gonna give it just a second. Right. Um, so Carrie, the other thing I wanted to ask you is if you could help me keep an eye on the Zoom. And when it's time for public comment also, that would be great help.
I will.
Okay. All right. So this Livingston City Commission meeting on October 4th is called to order. Roll call, please.
Chair Newt's here.
Vice Chair Cale.
Here.
Commissioner Friedman.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yeah.
Next on the agenda is general public comments. Individuals are reminded that public comments should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, controls jurisdiction, or advisory power. So this is just general comments. So if you have comments about something on the agenda tonight, I'd ask you to wait until that agenda item to well back until we're to that point in the agenda. And then we call for public comment.
Okay. Well.
While I'm talking, Richard Smith. Thank you very much. Um, but if you want to give general public comment, please put your name in the chat or you can raise your virtual hand. And when I call on you, I'll ask you to name, state your name and your address for the record. Oh, and you'll have four minutes and staff will put up a timer. Wendy Weaver.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Wendy, please go ahead and state your name and your address for the record.
This is Wendy Weaver, 203 South Ice Street, Livingston. Uh, thank you for allowing me to comment tonight. I, I'm here to um, ask and understand more from the commission on what is happening after the flood that we had this summer. Uh, this is, this is stemming from a recent meeting I attended in the Upper Yelson Watershed Group in Immigrant last week, where John Lonzer, who is uh, the hydrologist for the DNRC, who is currently working on a water budget for Paradise Valley and studying the river and groundwater levels um over the summer. And he essentially provided a kind of a snapshot of what happened, what led to the flood and 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 his overlying message was that it could have been much more catastrophic than it was. And and we are actually relatively lucky that it was not. And that we may be able to expect these types of events to occur at a more frequency than uh, you know, every 500 years as it might state as the flood frequency was. So I guess I'm giving a little context because I also read an article in the High Country News that quoted uh, Jim Woodhull, who is a city planner, uh, talking about uh, that we should be building in the flood plain, which, which I understand uh, you are allowed to build in the flood plain. But those comments in that article were a little disturbing and I, it made me wonder and want to ask uh, the city commission, what, what types of conversations are you having regarding the flood event? Uh, what, what is happening to repair, study, improve, or change the levee system? Uh, that I believe was impacted from the flood event. Uh, I don't know if it was, I don't know if it's been uh, I imagine you've had engineers out there to look at it. And just curious to know what, what the state of it is, and also what plans are to address on the levy. And then also bigger picture, like what are the things that uh, we could be doing as a community to uh, prevent some of this uh, damage from occurring for having homes and infrastructure in the flood plain? So just a bigger picture question of what we could be doing to address this. So maybe we're thinking more of the long-term resiliency of the river and impacts it had on people here. So I will formulate this a little more concisely in an email and send that. But I really just, at some point, doesn't have to be tonight. I know you have a big agenda. Would like to understand what the city is doing and also what the city is doing to work and coordinate with the county and DNRC and what type of efforts are happening. Because from our standpoint, we're still seeing a very disconnected, siloed response. And so I just would like to learn more. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Wendy. And I know your experience with these meetings that we, the commissioner, are not allowed to deliberate or get into discussions without it being on the agenda. But you can trust that at least one commissioner was taking notes on what you said and will forward to your email and um, at some point, figured out a way hopefully to get this on the agenda so we can have more of a discussion and update from city staff and a conversation between commissioners. So thanks, Wendy. Um, anyone else with general public comment? Okay, seeing nothing. Public comment is closed. We're gonna move into consent items. We have three consent items this evening. Uh, I would like to pull action or consent item, excuse me, C. Is there any others that commissioners want pulled for discussion? If not, I am looking for a motion on consent items A and B.
Make the motion approved consent items A and B. Second.
Motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please.
Chair Newt's.
For.
Vice Chair Cale.
For.
Commissioner Friedman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes. Um, since I asked to have C pulled, I just wanted to flag that we didn't get an application like we typically get for board recommendations. Do see the email, but I don't see the attachment that the email referenced. Other commissioners? And I maybe, again, maybe it was just my packet. Maybe somebody else has the attachment. So I guess I should get clarity on that first, but.
No, that was, Madam Chair.
Yes.
That was gonna be my question as well. I think we need a formal application filled out. Um, and have it on file to approve that number. I think it's just a matter of formality, but I don't think we can do it till we have the uh, the actual application, even though the L bid did approve it. We need, still need the uh, the information on um, Dale Hopkins.
Okay. Thanks. Commissioner Schwartz. Other commissioners?
Chair Newt's.
Yes.
Can I ask, did the city receive it? I'm, now I'm looking at the email from Chris King and it looks like she did attach it, but
Sure.
We, I'm, do, do we have it on file? Do we know?
Mrs. Lowey.
Forgot to unmute myself again. Um, I'm, I can check with Faith. I believe we have it on file.
We do, we do have it.
Okay. It looks like it just didn't make it into the packet with, when we printed the email, the attachment didn't print automatically and come in through our system. So um, we can certainly get that up on the screen for you. But if you want to move this to another meeting, we certainly can do that as well.
Commissioners, do you have a preference? Uh, moving text on a screen is not possible for me to read right now, so I would not be able to read it. But other commissioners' abilities may vary. Did you want to see it on a, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Schwartz.
Madam Chair, um, I don't have a problem with, just as long as we have the application. Um, that's all matters to me. Um, so I would be in favor, well, favor of moving forward with this at this time, but I'll, I'll wait for other commissioners to weigh in.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Vice Chair Cale.
Um, I, I'll, I'll agree with Quentin. Um, I, I would hate to um, penalize the T bid because we didn't get this in the packet. Um, seems like they did, they did the work that they needed to do to, to be prepared for this. Um, so I would be comfortable moving forward with this. Um, Chris King, I, I noticed Chris King is on the line too, so I think um, if she had any concerns, she would have taken comments about it. But I, I would hate to penalize them and have them short a member for potentially another month before we can get this on the docket.
Other commissioners? Does anyone else want to chime in? All right. Well, moving forward, I would ask that we get applications in our packets just to streamline the process a bit and give us a chance to look it over in advance of the meeting. Um, are we, I'm ready for a motion then for consent items C.
Make the motion for um, approved consent items C. Second.
A motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please.
Faith, you may be muted.
Mrs. Lowey, can you check on your end?
Sure. Um, I'll just go through the roll call. Chair Newt's.
For.
Vice Chair Cale.
For.
Commissioner Friedman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Lowey. And thank you, commissioners. All right. Next up on the list, we have a proclamation of the Livingston City Commission, recognizing the 100th anniversary of National Fire Protect, excuse me, of National Fire Prevention Week, and declaring October 9th to 15th, 2022 to be Fire Prevention Week in the city of Livingston. And Vice Chair Cale has kindly offered to read it for us.
All right. Thank you, Chair Newt. And uh, I usually read these a hard time, so sorry. This is a dry read if I make a few mistakes here. Um, "Whereas the city of Livingston has committed to fire protect, protection and prevention for those living in and visiting our city for 125 years on October 13th, 2002. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires caused 2,580 civilian deaths in the United States in 2020, according to the National Fire Prevention Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 356,500 home fires. And whereas smoke alarms sent smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas Livingston residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sound of the fire alarm and knows how to respond. And whereas Livingston residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Livingston residents will make sure that their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities, whereas Livingston's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Livingston residents that are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape, effectively serves to remind Livingston it is important to have a home fire plan. Therefore, I, Melissa Newt's, chairperson of the city of Livingston, do by, do hereby proclaim October 9th through the 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week in the city of Livingston. And I urge all the people of Livingston to plan and practice a fire home escape for Fire Prevention Week 2022, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Livingston's fire and emergency services.
That was fantastic. Thank you, Vice Chair Cale.
You're welcome.
And, and this is a great proclamation, and I just wanted to give Mrs. Lowey a chance to share with us if there's any events happening around town or ways that we might be engaging with our staff during this week.
We do have some events planned um, in cooperation with all of the departments in the area to do awareness around fire prevention. Um, this is traditionally the times when we'll go into the schools and perhaps do presentations to younger kids about fire safety. Um, so we'll be looking to do some of that. It may, may carry over past this week. Um, and into next month as well, but we certainly do make those, make those rounds throughout this time of year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thanks to our excellent fire department staff for helping teach our kids in our community. So you know, little kids in Livingston, you can ask them what they learned from our fire department over the next month. All right.
Chair Newt. Chair Newt's.
Yeah.
I would also just like to remind folks, this is a great time of year to check your fire, your smoke detectors batteries. Um, so please remember to do that.
Yeah, great reminder. Any other commissioners? Okay, I don't see anything. So we'll move on to resolutions. Looks like we have four resolutions tonight. First one is Resolution 5066, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, of its intent to amend the budget for the fiscal year 2021 through 2022 by making appropriation adjustments in the amount of $399,075 and revenue adjustments in the amount of $205,848, and calling for a public hearing. Mrs. Lowey.
Thank you, Chair Newt's. This is our annual on budget amendment resolution where we true up um, projected budget to actual, while we, we certainly make every effort to project every aspect of the budget at the beginning of the year. Unforeseen things do come up that result in either higher revenue, higher expenses, or some change to what we had projected um, the year before. This is part of our audit process, again, where we true up. Um, if anyone has any questions specific to this, um, again, this is a resolution of intent. So you will see it again in the November 1st meeting. Um, Paige Federoff, our finance office, finance director is on, on this call in case any of you have specific questions this evening about um, some of the items contained in the uh, resolution of intent. Thank you.
Commissioners, do any of you have clarifying questions on this agenda item?
Chair Newt's, I think Commissioner Lyons raised it.
Oh, thank you so much, Commissioner Lyons.
Oh, never mind. That was a mistake. Uh, my mistake, not, not Vice Chair Cale's mistake.
No worries. At a well-attended me to, meeting, our rectangles are all quite small also, so it's easy to. All right. I don't see any clarifying questions. And this again, like Mrs. Lowey said, it's a resolution. So this will come back before us at a public hearing. And is it just one reading, Mrs. Lowey, to public hearing for a budget resolution? I see a nod. Okay.
Yes, correct. Sorry.
All right. So I'm looking for a motion. Can I have a motion on resolution number 5066?
Oh, I'll make a motion uh, to approve resolution number 5066.
Second.
So there's a motion by Cale and a second by Schwartz. And now I'll open it to public comment. Anyone have public comment for resolution 5066? Right? I don't see anything. So public comment is closed. And commissioners? Any deliberation? Anything folks want to talk about? At this time, no. Right? I don't see anything. So I'm gonna go to a roll call. Roll call, please.
Chair Newt's.
For.
Vice Chair Cale.
For.
Commissioner Friedman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is resolution number 5067. A resolution of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, authorizing the city manager to sign a professional services agreement with TDNH for design services of the 2023 Livingston Downtown Alley Capital Improvements Project. Mrs. Lowey.
Thank you, Chair Newt's. Um, this is the contract with TDNH to design the three and a half blocks in the downtown alleys that are in the next phase of our program for rehabbing the downtown. Total cost is 58, roughly 58,000. That does already include contingency in it. Um, with the familiarity that TDNH has, both with this project and with all of the infrastructure um, within the city of Livingston, there's no reason to think that this will um, come in over that amount. So um, this is just continuing on in our, in our next phases. Um, if you have very specific questions about the contract TDNH or um, the exact portions of what will be included in this, Mr. Holmes is on the line as well and available for specific questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do any of you have clarifying questions? All right, then I'll start us off. I have two questions, Mrs. Lowey. My first question, I'm on page 38 of the agenda. It says that the design cost does not include time for public meetings to support the city with open and transparent communication with businesses and all affected by the project. I was wondering um, what that means. Does that mean that we will be billed more later, or does that mean that they will not be doing public outreach, or what, what should we be interpreting by that statement?
You are on which page again? I'm sorry, 30.
All right, I'm on page 38. It's the first page of the letter that was directed towards Mr. Holmes from the engineering firm.
Mm-hmm. With the design phase, there's generally not as much public participation because they're working through the initial design components of where utilities need to be placed, what size they need to be. It's when we get into construction management that we have a lot of input from the affected area of business owners um, and input into that. This is, this is more of an engineering exercise where they determine exactly what has to be done to meet those requirements.
And my understanding too is that maybe our public works director and his staff do some of that outreach ongoing, but I don't, I don't want to make assumptions. I want to just clarify. Okay.
They do a lot of it.
That's, I was under that impression based on what the community tells me about how often they see Mr. Holmes. So.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So my other question is, um, the next page, it talks about streetlights and electrical design. I was curious if the project will include the necessary infrastructure for EV charging stations. I know Mr. Carter's was thinking about those things when he had the other stations put in quite some time ago. So I was just wondering if that's something that we're still kind of tracking and making sure that infrastructure gets in is for you know, removing parts of the street and alleys and replacing them, that it's all happening, or what the plan is there?
We are looking to see where EV stations would be the best fit and where we have capacity and, and where Northwest Energy is able to provide power um, sufficient enough for those chargers. We, it's our understanding that new transformers are required um, for the higher capacity for port chargers um, that we've discussed previously. Um, so we're, we're looking at that and all of it is, is certainly a consideration. Um, but we need to look at what the rest of the infrastructure includes first.
Just to be clear, I wasn't thinking of any specific, like, I wasn't thinking necessarily of the fast charging or the slow charging. I was just thinking more of like the proactive. This is the direction in which Montana is moving and communities are, while streets are torn up, they're starting to get that infrastructure. So.
It's certainly on our radar.
Yeah, so that would be good. I think the commission would like to hear updates um, on what you learn and what's feasible.
Mm-hmm.
And our hearts. Thank you. Other commissioners, do any of you have questions about this before we move forward?
Uh, I'll just uh, second Chair Newt's is interest in, in considering um, basically the prudence of upgrading any kind of electrical infrastructure while um, while the streets are torn up. Um, and I will uh, also agree with her that uh, downtown is maybe not the, the, the place where um, fast chargers would be most uh, helpful in Livingston, but um, uh, level two chargers might, um, might make more sense in downtown. So um, just thinking about a potential upgrade, having that in mind while the streets are torn up, I think is, um, would be a prudent use of resources. I yield.
Thanks, Commissioner Lyons. I know you have a special expertise in this area too, so thanks for offering some insight. All right. Any other commissioner questions, clarifying questions about this? I don't see anything. Carrie, I can't tell if you're on mute. And you're trying.
I'm good. I'm sorry, dog. I was dealing with dog.
Oh, that's fair. That's fair. Okay. So looking for a motion on resolution number 5067. Do you have a motion?
I'll make motion to prove resolution 5067. Second.
Motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. We're gonna move it to a public comment. Do you have a comment on resolution 5067? Please raise your hand, put your name in the chat. I am not seeing anything. Nope. Okay. So public comment for resolution 5067 is closed. Commissioners, anything else folks want to say before we move into a vote?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I could ask a question.
Yes, please. Go ahead, Commissioner Schwartz.
Um, I'd like to direct this question to Shannon Holmes, if I may.
That is up to Mrs. Lowey.
That is fine, Commissioner Schwartz. Thank you.
Um, I just have a question on page, would be 42. On the uh, on the projected phases, I just um, a constituent asked about Third Street when um, um, water was gonna be done on that. Is that 2026? Is that, am I reading that right?
So Commissioner Schwartz, I apologize. I, I printed out all the sheets, but, but I did not include that one. So I might ask Faith if she can put that up and talk you through it. Um, I will say that, that those phases were done back in that 2015 to 17 timeframe, and we've really uh, under Mike's tenure, we've doubled up on projects. And from 2017 to 21, we were doing um, two phases per year.
Yeah, right. I'm just curious, because it's, it's marked yellow, but we had yellow in 2016 and yellow in 2026. And I, we haven't done anything on Third, so I, I just assume.
We, 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 we haven't, but if you notice on page 41, Quentin, um, you know, TDNH is gonna do the survey out to Third Street primarily for water and street grades. Um, but we're, 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 we have expanded the survey to help save some costs with these future phases.
Okay.
And that way, we, we certainly can look at the street grades and, and storm drain improvements necessary, because everything drains from Park Street, basically to the south to Fleishman Creek. So.
That answers that question. Thanks, Shannon.
And what, while I'm on, if I may, I just, I just want to um, maybe clarify, um, on page 38, Matt uh, states that they, they, it does include time for public meetings to support the city. So um, we, we fully intend to get all the affected business owners together this winter as we move forward with design and, and um, as we've done with the previous five downtown projects, certainly be very open and transparent with, with the construction schedule and, and um, accommodate the wants and needs of the downtown the best we can. I yield.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. My eyes were misread that. So thank you. So that's even greater news. All right. Any other questions or comments, commissioners, before we move to a vote?
Commissioner Newt's, I, I would just say, um, I. Commissioner Noots, I would just say I I would just like to agree with you and Commissioner Lyons about making sure we're looking at the possibility of getting that electric into the streets for EV charging as we move forward so that we're prepared as we head into the future. So thank you for both of you, to both of you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kill. Anything else, commissioners? All right, so we have a motion to approve resolution five zero six seven and a second roll call, please.
Chair Noots.
For.
Vice Chair Kill. For. Commissioner Freeman.
Or.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Lyons.
Or.
Motion passes. Next on our list is resolution number five zero six eight. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, to abandon an old right-of-way in the North Town subdivision Lot Three A and to clear the title for the property which will be described as North Town subdivision phases four A, four B, and five. Mrs. Lowey.
Thank you, Chair Noots. This was an old right-of-way that is specifically actually designated for a county road when this section was formerly county property and in county jurisdiction. It has been annexed, so it is now part of the city limits. There is no plan to put a road there or no need to put a road there. And in order for the title to be cleared for this to move forward to the subdivision process which they have applied for and are beginning that process, this right-of-way needs to be abandoned because it is actually specifically for a county road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lowey. Would you be able to pull up the map?
Yep.
I'm not sure which maps, but I trust that you all pick a good map.
We have we have a couple available either through Cadastral and on
Okay.
and and Courtney are going to work on some screen sharing here to bring exactly where it is, both in the plot plan as well as on Cadastral, so that hopefully it's more of a a visual than just lines on a page for.
So this this looks like a different resol- uh, different agenda item.
For M R L.
Yeah.
Which is coming up.
So while you all are pulling up a map, I'm just going to go ahead and ask the commission if any of you have clarifying questions about this agenda item you want to ask. And I know staff is working to get the image up, so we can start the conversation while we wait for them to pull up the correct map. Because there'll probably be more than one map we'll look at tonight. Commissioners, do any of you have questions about this agenda item, clarifying questions? Commissioner Lyons, you have the floor.
Thanks. I I I may have missed it, but I didn't see any kind of so Mrs. Lowey is talking about that it was it was a right-of-way for a county road and that now that this is annexed into the city. There's no more need for a county road, but I don't see any like information from the county to that effect, like if the county has ambitions for a road to continue from that right-of-way in the future. I'm just curious what kind of input is needed from the county for us to understand the implications of our decision here in the city.
Great question. Mrs. Lowey, have you? Do we have any letters or comments from the County Commission on this?
I do not, but this is specifically annexed into the city, so this is simply a deed cleanup exercise. Unfortunately, it wasn't done at the time of annexation. So we're just cleaning up that title so that they can move forward with the subdivision. The the county, the county would not have jurisdiction to put a county road within the city limit, so there's there's no plans beyond that.
Right, so the the county might not have jurisdiction to put a county road in the city limits, but if they intend to put a county road at the terminus of this right-of-way, that would be a salient factor in our decision, in my opinion. So I'm interested in what the county's desires are if the if, you know, this maybe maybe this road was was proposed a long time ago and it's no longer necessary. But if it is going to be necessary in the future for us to abandon this right-of-way today, that might be you know, not not a wise decision. So I'm curious. I I would want to know something from the county before making a decision of of what to do with the right-of-way.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. Other commissioners, do any of you have questions about this? I do have a question, but I was hoping that the Cadastral would be available to look at.
Screen sharing.
Yeah. And it's a big website. My question will be about the Cadastral. I'm also, my line of thinking sort of follows what Commissioner Lyons was referring to, and I'm wondering when looking at this map of where the right-of-way is, what's on the other side of that city line if that right-of-way for a road continues on the county side? So again, it's it's like a different version, the same thing of what Commissioner Lyons was saying.
Just waiting for all the screen sharing to get up here.
Sure.
Can you guys see my my screen?
Yes, we can.
Yep, I can now. Attorney Lawland, my my understanding is there is no further plans beyond that point that concern the county, but I have not had specific discussions with the county for that. Is there any further guidance that you can provide to that regard?
If you're looking at the map that's now in front of you on the screen, you can see over here where the subdivision, where the Sweet Grass subdivision or where the Sweet Grass Road is and the subdivisions that's now built out and the section that's now in between there. If you zoom out, you can see that the section line is up here. And then this property is held by one owner. And then beyond that, it goes into the Miggs Road area. And so the the subdivision plans for that area would probably be built off of Miggs Road if they were going to come in from the county. And those roads would be developed from that direction. The road as it exists in the right-of-way or in the yeah, in the right-of-way on the Peterson transfer was intended to extend what they thought would be a road into what they expected to be a subdivision or a development. And that property changed hands. And now we're looking at it from a different perspective versus the the hands that it was in at the time. And if you see on the map that is provided by the the developer with the lots and blocks in it, you can see where that road goes. And you can also see that it connects to Scenic Trail. So it was intended to be an extension of that part of the road before there was ever a Ridge View or a North Town.
So it appears to me that the Cadastral does not show right-of-ways, so it does not show the city or the county right-of-way for that road. It just shows what what has already been approved by the commission and the developments that have not yet been through the public hearing and commission process are not indicated on the map, nor are the right-of-ways. All right. So any other clarifying questions, commissioners? It looks like Commissioner Schwartz, I think I see your hand up. You have wait, just a second. Commissioner Lyons, were you done? I feel like I never properly closed.
I'm done now. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Commissioner Schwartz, you have the floor.
I'm on page fifty-five. Because the county asking the city to annex that road, have any bearing on this at all? And that was dated on November of two thousand seventeen. If that has any bearing on this discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Short. So you're in you're pointing out on page fifty-five that when the city annexed this portion of land, that that portion of the road became a city easement instead of a county easement. So. For pointing that out. Other commissioners, do any of you have clarifying questions? All right. So it sounds like there's a couple of commissioners that are curious what's on the other side of that city property and if there's any what the plans for the county are. So we're working in partnership when it comes to infrastructure. There's a few ways that the motion could go. If people want more information, there could be a motion to postpone. And with a request for city staff to get information from the County Commission about their intentions on the other side of that city line. That's one possibility, postpone for more information. Otherwise, obviously, there could be a motion to approve and then it would pass or not pass. So I'm wondering, commissioners, we're going to need a motion. Any more thoughts before we have a motion?
I I'm interested in in just the my only hangup is what what the county's intention is beyond the city jur- city's jurisdiction. If I if I can have information on that, I will be a lot more confident voting, so my preference would be to to get that information prior to a vote. And that that's my preference.
We're obviously not making a decision. I just we're going to have to have a motion and open it's public comment. Motions can be amended. But I wonder if anybody else wants to say anything before I ask for a motion. Commissioner Schwartz?
I didn't get an answer back on page fifty-five. I was hoping maybe
Mrs.
Lawland could answer that.
That'll be up to.
What her thoughts are on on this as well for a legal standpoint.
Good. Mrs. Lowey?
In in looking at this, obviously, it's the the statement of the county requesting that we annex it into the city, so you know, while I understand Commissioner Lyons' point, I think if they had huge intention for it, they never would have annexed it, requested that we annex it. So I don't know if Attorney Lawland has any further input on that. So I believe that this was kind of done around when I was not as involved in land use as I am currently, so.
So the.
Attorney Lawland.
If if I may.
Just one, Commissioner Lyons, just one moment, because Commissioner Freeman had the floor, and so I gave it to Mrs. Lowey. She can call on her staff, and I will come back to you, Mr., excuse me, Commissioner Lyons. So Mrs. Lowey, if you want to call on staff, you may.
Yeah, I'd like to see if Attorney Lawland has any further on commentary or answers to those questions.
I can answer a little further, Commissioner Schwartz. If you will look at page fifty-five, which you brought up, the annexation was what that request to annex, which is not an actual annexation, but a request that's part of the process for the city to adopt roads, talks about a county road. But this was never a county road. It was only a right-of-way that was dedicated to public use. And then if you look at page, let's start with page fifty-two, you will see that there's an order quieting title. And the plaintiff in that instance is Bill Mullenfeld, and the defendants are the bank, Livingston Memorial Hospital, Prairie Drive Subdivision Homeowners Association, and Park County, Montana. So if you will look then on page fifty-three, so it says in number five that plaintiff's title to said real property is hereby forever quieted against any and all claims or demands of these defendants and any persons claiming under them to any estate right title lien interest to said property. These defendants and any persons claiming under them are permanently enjoined from asserting any claim or interest to any said property or any part thereof, and that includes this this dedicated right-of-way. And so the the property has been quieted, the title has been quieted in favor of Mr. Mullenfeld, and and this is somewhat pro forma in in having the city abandon this, but it does make the the title quiet for purposes of the recording that has been done at the clerk and the clerk of courts or the clerk and recorder's office. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes, it does. I and I read that too as well. That's why I wanted to go back to that. Okay, my answers are, I'm satisfied. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Now, Commissioner Lyons, you have the floor.
I was just going to say that to Mrs. Lowey's point that the the county or the annexation of property into the city does not mean that the county has no ambition for anything happening within the county that's that's adjacent to or contiguous to that property line. So like it like any time that 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 land is annexed into the city, that's not that's not the county saying, and we also don't care about what happens along the periphery of this property either. So just wanted to 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 say that because it came into the city, that doesn't mean that the county has no has no authority or interest in what's happening at the boundary of of that property. And that's what I'm interested in is what's what the county care, what the county sees for the future at the bounty, at the boundary of that, extending from the boundary of that property. Once I hear that from the county, I'm happy to 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 vote on it. And I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. All right, so any other commissioners, clarifying questions? Otherwise, I'm going to be asking for a motion. Any other commissioners? All right, I don't see anything. So commissioners, you've heard our discussion. You know what some of our options are. I'm looking for a motion for resolution number five zero six eight.
I make a motion to approve resolution five zero six eight. Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve in a second, and now I'm going to open it to public comment for resolution number five zero six eight. So if you want to give public comment, please, you can raise your hand, or you can put your name in the chat, or you know, you can always come off mute if you can't do either of those things also. So I see Garrett Schultz. Could you please state your name and your address for the record before you give testimony?
Yes. Hello, commissioners. I'm Garrett Schultz. I work for Headwaters Engineering in Bozeman at one ninety North Star Lane. And I am representing North Town Development Court. I appreciate all the discussion that this topic has had. I agree with Ms. Lowey and Ms. Lawland that in our understanding, this is largely a formality. What we've done is is we've taken an old right-of-way that was never used, never actually accepted by the county. And all we've done is moved it over, you know, about a hundred feet or less in some areas. So I think it's important to note that there's still connectivity from this parcel to the county parcel to the north. The plans that we've submitted with the preliminary plat for North Town Development Phases four A, four B, and five include an asphalt paved roadway for most of that length. And then our grading plan, I think there's another maybe two hundred feet or so to get to the end that we don't have lots. But we still have provided a sixty-four foot right-of-way from where our road ends on Blue Stem Way to this county parcel. So I think the other thing that hasn't been brought up on this one is this easement was introduced in two thousand. And there was actually, at that time, a capital improvement fund set up by the county that said if the funds are not I think I think the original estimate for this gravel road was about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, if I remember. If the county had not raised those funds by two thousand ten, there was a sunset clause on that capital improvement fund. And it was to be evaluated by the county again at that time, if they even wanted this easement and wanted this road. And to my knowledge, I have not found any records out there where they took any action after two thousand ten. So this this thing's been sitting there for twenty-two years. This thing's been sitting there for twenty-two years, has had a sunset clause expire on it. Um, the county has asked the city to annex it into the city. Um and was really never formally accepted by the county, if you go back and look at the existing plat. It says right on there that this is a an easement that um is not for public use. Until it's been uh until a road has been constructed on it and and officially accepted by the county, that never happened. Okay? Um. So I I think I'll leave it with that, and I I I think the biggest point here is that all we've done is shift this over to the west a little bit, still provided. Really good connectivity to that parcel, um and in reality, if if somebody were to go develop that parcel to the north. Um, the county would look at this road system to the south. And very likely uh require that developer to continue our right-of-way that we've provided into that parcel and develop around. That's all I have available for further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz, any other public comment on resolution number five zero six eight? Yes. I see some movement, Vice Chair Kill, do you see any?
No, I I don't see any.
Okay, thank you, so. See no other public comment. Public comment for resolution number five zero six eight is closed. And now we'll move to commission deliberation, so this is no longer clarifying questions, but this is we get to talk about it. So commissioners. Who would like to go, Commissioner Schwartz?
Um, yeah, after um hearing from Mr. Schultz, um that um there. Um will be, there is an easement, it's just being moved, um that satisfies um any misgivings I might have about. Um the abandonment, so as long as we we do have a right-of-way, it just moved, um I'm comfortable with it, thank you, I yield.
Just just to be clear, we haven't voted on anything that would indicate a right-of-way being moved, that's not what the agenda item is, and we. That whole conversation has to go through a public hearing, and it's. To my understanding, not even gone through any of the process, so the presumption was to assume. What's gonna happen with something that hasn't been before the commission and the planning board? So I just wanna make sure we're staying focused on this particular right-of-way and not what may or may not happen at a future meeting.
Well, it has bearing on this, but.
What's that?
It has bearing on on the abandonment, but um. Okay.
Well, I mean, I guess what I'm seeing, Commissioner Schwartz, is it has varied, but it doesn't necessarily mean that. Uh we can't say whether something will or will not. Be approved or right-of-way for something that hasn't come before us yet, so it does have varying. Maybe it would get approved and maybe it wouldn't.
But in the packet, he he outlines that they are providing a a right-of-way. Um.
So that. The subdivision map?
I'm I'm reading the engineer's report.
Can you um?
On page fifty-seven.
So I believe the engineer report. The change in right-of-way is to a preliminary plat that has not yet gone through the preliminary. That's a tough string of words to say, the preliminary plat has not gone through the process of approval.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a lot of P's, so it is referenced, but that has not yet moved through the appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I yield.
So thank you for pointing that out, um other commissioners, we're in the deliberation phase, who wants to chime in next? Commissioner Lyons?
It would it, Chair News, would it be appropriate for me to ask another question, I I'm. I've arrived at another question, unfortunately.
Yeah, I think sometimes that just happens, Commissioner Lyons, if one thing I wanna be mindful of is that if we get significant amount of new information, we should open it back up to the public. Just because they have a right to all the same information that we do, but this does happen sometimes, so I think it's appropriate, go ahead.
Um, well, I I really appreciate the discussion on on the process, and. I think when when you look at the map, it's a little bit confusing, because you're, you 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 think of like a simultaneous. If you abandon this right-of-way, then this one exists, but I I really do appreciate you pointing out that you abandoned this right-of-way. And then there's a proposed subdivision, and then depending on what happens with that proposed subdivision, there may or may not then be. A new newly dedicated right-of-way, so um. I'm curious, this, I have a question for uh for Mr. Lawland, which is if the city were to abandon the right-of-way. Does the city, is there any claim to a future right-of-way or a an actual and a replacement? Or does the city just for the time being lose any claim to a right-of-way and um? In abandoning this current one?
So just to make sure that we're following process, I'll turn questions over to Mrs. Lowey, and then she can choose to answer them or pass them on. You can always say that you'd like a legal opinion, and that will still be up to Mrs. Lowey to help um. To pass the question along to our city attorney, um so it sounds like what you're saying is when we abandon a right-of-way. Hypothetically, when we abandon a right-of-way, are we guaranteed? That we're gonna get another right-of-way to replace that, or is it just a one decision, decision? Okay, alright, Mrs. Lowey, if that's clear, if it's not, please let us know.
Um, I'll defer to whether that's clear enough for Attorney Lawland or not to answer, so turn to Owen.
It is. Um, when we look at proposal. Connectivity as part of the subdivision regulations and the design standards that are required, so. Uh there would have to be something there, it it wouldn't necessarily have to be exactly where Blue Stem Way was. Um but I wouldn't see any reason why it it couldn't be exactly there. Um, so. In providing connectivity, that's part of the subdivision regulations and the design standards, so there would still be something there. Uh wherever you guys decided to uh. Approve the the subdivision plans.
So I I think approve is a is a pretty active word there. Uh, it it would require the approval of a new subdivision in order to gain a new. Right-of-way, correct, if we abandon a right-of-way today. And there and then in some in in for some unforeseen circumstances, no subdivision is is approved. Then we no long, then the city no longer has any right-of-way within that within that parcel, is that correct?
Uh, Mrs. Lowey, are you still there? He has a follow-up question.
I I am, Attorney Lawland can feel free to answer the follow-up question.
So. The answer to your question is no. But it's private property. And because the county road was never created. It's not likely that we have a a right-of-way. Through there, because we've already changed the way the roads are. Any development that was approved would have to have connectivity.
Okay, that's clear, thank you very much.
So Commissioner Lyons, you still have the floor, you had a question and we're in deliberation, is there anything else you wanted to say at this time?
Um, no, I think I I just appreciate uh. And I think it's like important to describe how this process works, so abandoning the right-of-way. A new sub- uh subdivision is proposed, if it's approved. And and this is just a one design that hasn't even gone through the planning board uh yet. Uh but the design that that will go to the planning board, if this is. If this is abandoned, because they can't do this design with the current easement easement, so if it is abandoned. Then this is the design that they're suggesting that they will bring to the planning board, if that passes the planning board and then passes. The commission, then the the right-of-way will be realigned, but there are many steps from this decision today of abandoning. To a new right-of-way, um so and I and I really do appreciate everyone helping us. To to clarify and understand that process, I think it's helpful, and I yield.
Can we see? Not the, well, I don't know if it matters if it's a cadaster, what I'm mostly interested in is the boundary of the city, so um. Probably a Google map would show it, or I'm not sure, maybe um not a Google map, but maybe um. Like the City of Livingston zoning map would probably show it. If we could share that, it'll show the city boundaries. What I'm interested in is. What's on the other, that north side of that property line, because my understanding is what Commissioner Lyons was describing is that it's county on the other side of that. But I'm not sure if that's the case, can we please see the? Um, county or the city zoning? Alright, so. Alright, so that is the boundary between city and county, the edge of this map that we're seeing. Can you zoom out just one, so I can orient uh North Night Street there? Thank you, alright, so this is the border of the city and county, so I still. Also would like to hear from the county and just affirm that. What their plans are on the other side. Because. Just because we would make changes doesn't mean that it would align with the county changes, and like was said by staff previously. Um. You know, the right-of-ways go through, or the easements, these right-of-ways go through private property, so we can't just assume that a county. Private property owner on the opposite side of city land is going to agree with whatever decisions we're making in our jurisdiction, so it'd be good just to coordinate, I think. Um. That's that's my opinion, I would really like to hear from the county, I think it's a simple request to see what the county's plans are. And just get clarity on that, before we make a decision that we can't undo. Other commissioners? There's a couple commissioners I haven't heard from yet, so I'm gonna give a chance if Commissioner Freeman or Vice Chair Vice Chair Kill have anything that they wanna say.
Chair News.
Yeah, you have the floor.
Thanks, um. I. I feel the same way, I feel like we need to know what's on the other side of this, and if the county has got. Got plans, or if there they have plans for another road there, I think it's just sort of like the due process of dotting our i's and. Crossing our t's before we make this decision, um it just seems like the right thing to do. Um and so I I just wanted to share that as as my deliberating thoughts of that. I'd like to just make sure that we have all of our docs in a row before we make this decision.
Uh, any other commissioners wanna say anything, otherwise I'm gonna ask a process question. Okay, I don't see anything, so um. My question is, Mrs. Lowey, and I understand you might need. To ask the city attorney for guidance, but my question is. Um, you know, my concern is if this goes for a vote the way the motion is stated and it fails, then it'll be the end of it and the conversation's over. Um, it sounds like a majority of the commissioners would like more information before a vote. And so I'm wondering, is there, what's the process for a replacement motion? I'm looking it up in my book and I'm not finding it right now. Or or what would be a process, because I'm concerned about a motion failing and then it just ends the conversation completely, does that make sense?
We have a motion on the table already.
Right, and so I'm asking Mrs. Lowey right now for clarity on, just because a motion's on the table, sometimes you can amend it or. Add to motions, but if we have a motion and it fails, it could end the conversation, so my concern is, we want more information, we don't necessarily want the conversation to be over.
I would um defer to Attorney Lawland, I believe you have to contend with the first motion because it is on the table and active. But I know that that ends the conversation, so with that, I would turn it over to Attorney Lawland for her.
Sometimes.
Opinion.
Sometimes there's like amendments and then you vote on things in a certain order or reverse order, so sometimes there's more than one motion, so that's where I'm getting.
Well, I think you you may need either amend it or deal with it or change it, so that's referring to Attorney Lawland.
Thank you.
You could um amend it certainly, you can table it, or you can vote on it. Um, I would add that if the county didn't um do the things that are required in the agreement. And this sunsetted, and maybe that's the question that you should be um asking us to find the answer to, is if this sunset it, the interest for the county didn't vest. And they don't have any vested interest in any kind of a right-of-way that would not be there any longer based on the sunset clause.
So you're saying we could vote, or we could amend, or we could table, my understanding of table is that it um. Stops the conversation and we don't get any more information, so I don't think we wanna table, but what would an amendment look like?
Well, you could table and ask us to come back with the information that you're requesting.
Okay, and what would, so we could table? And then we'd have to take it off the table, what would an amendment look like? Or what would it sound like, rather?
Well, you, when you amend a motion, you make the um proposed amendment, that proposed amendment is seconded. Then the amendment is voted on, then the amended motion is restated, and then you vote on the amended motion.
I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, um I. My understanding of amendment is when we would change the text or change the content of what we're voting, and we're not changing anything. Content-wise in the resolution, what we're suggesting is more information, so would we like, would the amendment be like that we wanna make a motion to postpone? Instead? Would that be the amendment, we would say, somebody would say they make a motion to postpone until and then name the next meeting?
Um, you you don't move to postpone, postponing is not part of motion practice.
Okay.
Is part of motion practice, um postponing is just something that you can do to bring something back.
Okay, so you're saying we could table it, asking for more information?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, I know it's a lot, thank you for. Thank you for understanding Robert's rules and being able to help us on the spot, I do appreciate it, okay, commissioners, um. So we could vote on it? It could pass or fail, we could. Um. Table it until a certain date, it would be good to say the meeting that we want it to come back and what it is that we want when it comes back. So. If we made a motion, if there was a motion to table, would we just vote on that first and then the other motion would die, or how does that work? Mrs. Lowey, I don't know if you want me to direct to you, or if Courtney can just handle that, okay?
Um, the motion to table. Is um the motion that you would make, you're you would not need to move to ask us to bring you more information. But it would be very helpful if you could be very clear about what information you want.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, I was actually. Going to be my request is is there's been a lot of a lot of back and forth and a lot of discussion. Um, so I would definitely um very much appreciate a very clear directive as to what I am asking the county for. So that we can get this through for um for the subdivision and still meet our deadlines, thank you.
Okay, so there's a couple things that came up there. I guess the first thing I'm gonna ask is. What do you understand our deadlines to be?
Sixty days from the date of application for the subdivision and the subdivision application is in, so.
When was the subdivision application submitted?
Um, I can look that up, but we don't, I mean, we're not going to be doing technically a meeting on. Potentially not doing a meeting on the eighteenth because of the city manager interviews, and that may put it right up against. A sixty-day deadline to get it into the planning board, and then you may all have to do a special meeting to meet that sixty day, so. Um, I can get those dates for you, but I think clarity for me and what I need to ask the county. Is paramount at this point, and then we can work out getting. The dates to you at that point, but I need to know what you're actually looking for.
Okay, so I'm just gonna write down a couple things here. Okay. So first, let's do. Before we do clarity of ass, let's do a motion, because there's no reason to have a conversation if it's not necessary, um. Does anyone want to make another motion? Commissioners, or do we have, Commissioner Lyons, okay, my screen jumped around, I lost you for a second. I'm gonna move you back up, there we go, okay, do we, um commissioners, is there, does anyone wanna make another motion? For resolution number five zero six eight?
Man, Chair.
Just. Uh, yeah.
Somebody can make a substitute motion to do away with, you know, the. You know, the, the first motion, um. But, you know, um. That's what you want to do, but um. He, he, some, or somebody's gotta make a decision. I'm, I'm, I'm happy with the motion on, that's on the floor now. But I'm just trying to help offer some guidance, say you, somebody could offer a substitute.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Does anyone want to offer a substitute motion? Otherwise, this is gonna move to a vote as it stands.
I'll make a motion that we. Table. Um. I don't have it right for me. Sorry, to get the number. That we table resolution five zero six eight. Until our November first meeting. Um, and ask. The staff to get us information from the county. Um, clarifying the, the. Sunset clause. Um. From, it looks like maybe December thirty first, twenty ten. Um, and also clarification from the county. About the need for a county road north, that would be north, north of this property line.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Kill. Um, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Kill and a second by Lyons. Do I need to? Yeah.
Uh, looks like. Mrs. Lowey may need additional information.
Thank you. Let me move, people moved around my screen just a second, so it's making it harder. Back up where I can see you better. Mrs. Lowey, go ahead.
So you're looking for clarification on the sunset clause?
Yeah, that was something that um the city attorney brought up. She said that she would advise us that we ask for clarification on that in addition to. The other thing that Vice Chair Kill stated.
Okay, and then I have clarification of the need for a county road to the north?
North of the property line, what are the intentions of the county? So presumably that right of way continues beyond city jurisdiction, and that's what we're wondering about.
And what was the first thing? Cause I missed, part of that got a little garbled on Zoom, so I apologize, Vice Chair.
And I, I, the, the, the first thing probably was that we would see this again at the November first meeting.
Yes.
I thought, okay, I thought there was something in between that.
There was a bunch of um, of me trying to find the right information.
No problem. Just wanted to check and make sure I had it.
No, thank you. Okay, so November first, there's a motion to table until November first. Um. Sunset clause and the need for a road north of the property line. So information that. Uh, the city attorney suggested in addition to the conversation we had. Okay. Do I need to open it back into the public? Or do I not need to, since we already did that? Mrs. Lowey, okay, thank you. So commissioners, anything else to say? Otherwise, I'm gonna move us to a vote. I don't see anything. No hands in City Hall? Okay, um, roll call, please.
Chair Noots.
For.
Vice Chair Kill.
For.
Commissioner Freeman.
Against.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Against.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes. So we'll look forward to seeing this back on the November first agenda. Alright. We have, I believe, one more resolution. Yes. Just flipping to that page of my agenda. Alright. So resolution number five zero six nine. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana. Extending the existing contract between the City of Livingston and Montana Waste Systems Incorporated. For the disposition of solid waste. Through June thirtieth. Twenty twenty three. Mrs. Lowey.
Thank you, Chair Noots. This is an extension of the already existing contract up until. June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. There is an increase of nine point eight five percent for this term. Um, there is, however, no surcharge for fuel. Um, right now, we are tracking about thirty five percent below volumes. Um, with the exit of the county from our solid waste agreement. Um, so what this extension does is gives us time to reevaluate. Conditions of the market, conditions with gas charges and what fuel cost will be. Um, as well as align it for our fiscal year, which will help us as we go into budgeting season. To make sure that we have the um appropriate figures as well as strong data around impacts from the county exiting us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lowey. Alright, commissioners, does anybody have clarifying questions?
Chair Noots.
Yeah, you have the floor.
Just real quickly, uh, Mrs. Lowey, there, there will also be some. Some edits to, to some of the, it looks like there's some addendums to the contract that are included in this vote as well. Um, and I would just say, uh. I, I appreciate the, uh, the addendum that says. No entity located in Park County shall be charged less than the City of Livingston. Thank you for that.
Yes, thank you. For that also. Um, other commissioners, any questions? Alright. So I'm looking for a motion for resolution number five zero six nine. Do I have a motion from the commission?
Make a motion to approve resolution five zero six nine. Second.
Some motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. I'm now, I'm gonna open it to public comment. If anyone wants to give comment on this resolution, please. Wave your hand around or raise your icon hand or put your name in the chat or. Alright, I don't see anything. So public comment for resolution number five zero six nine is closed, and we'll move to commission deliberation. I will begin and just say, um. There was a significant change in partnership to our solid waste services and. I do appreciate these, uh. These amendments and the staff catching these ways to make sure that we're. Doing right by the taxpayers in Livingston. So thanks for catching that also. Does anybody else want to say anything? I don't see anything. Is anyone else? Am I missing anybody? Okay. So we have a motion to approve by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please.
Chair Noots.
For.
Vice Chair Kill.
For.
Jumping the gun.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes. Alright. We are moving into our action items. I'm keeping an eye on the clock. I think. We're doing okay, so I'm gonna wait just a, a little bit more before we take a break. If that works for the commission, I think we can get through. We'll see how long the next one takes. Okay. So the first action item. Is to discuss approved deny. American Lutheran Church application for special parking spaces reserved for disabled persons on a public street. Mrs. Lowey.
In the application included on, on page ninety of your packet, the American Lutheran Church has indicated that they um. Are serving an older population that has some mobility issues trying to get in and out of. The church safely, um, and designating uh these parking spots would be of benefit to assist on. The general public, um, who may have some mobility challenges and issues to get into um the church safely. Um, our streets foreman has taken a look at this, sees no issue with it. Um, so it would be our recommendation that it would be um approved for. For the request or. Thank you.
Mrs. Lowey, I saw the, thank you for pulling the picture up, Faith. I saw the picture and I noticed that it's plural. Do you know? How many spaces they're requesting? It looks like you said two.
Sorry.
Okay, no, that's okay.
I had hit mute too fast.
And then, so staff, staff supports this and staff recommends to um. Spots in the place indicated on the.
Mm-hmm.
The curb shot, okay. Thank you. Alright, any other questions, commission? I don't see any hands. So is there a motion from the commission? For the American Lutheran Church application for special parking spaces?
I'll make a motion to approve the American Lutheran Church application for special parking spaces reserved for disabled person on a public street.
Second.
Motion by Kill and a second by Schwartz. And now I'm opening it to the public. Does anyone have comment they'd like to give for this agenda item? For this action item? I don't see any. Am I missing anybody? Okay, so public comment is closed for action item A. Anything to discuss, commissioners?
I'll just say, uh, Chair Noots, this church is in my neighborhood, um, and. Their lot is very small, and so I can understand why they would want these, these two spots for the disabled folks um that are going into church. Um, so, just a, a little. Background from my neighborhood.
Thanks for showing up for your neighborhood. Here at the commission. Anyone else? Alright, so let's move to a vote. Roll call, please.
Chair Noots.
For.
Vice Chair Kill.
For.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes. Let's be bold and do one more action item before we take our break. How's that? I see only nods, so I'm gonna go for it. Um, we're on action item B, discuss approved deny authorizing interim city manager to sign. An MOU with Livingston Library for health benefits coverage for health insurance benefits. Mrs. Lowey.
Thank you, Chair Noots. This is um, an agreement required by our health insurance carrier, MMIA, or administrator is probably the better word. Um, requiring us um. To have an existing agreement, an MOU, this memorandum of understanding with the library. Since the library voted to not be city employees. Um, there was a question of whether or not they would be able to continue on our health insurance. Um, this MOU allows them to continue on our health insurance, but also clarifies that. The library, because they have voted to not be city employees. Are no longer able to access the permissive health levy to help pay for their health benefits, and they will be paying. For their health benefits on their own, um, but they are eligible to stay on our plan. So this is a requirement. Um, that has been voted and approved by the library board and accepted. And it's just for us to execute so that those, um, those folks can stay on the health insurance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lowey. Clarifying questions from the commission. I will just take this moment, as always, to disclose that the library director is my spouse, although I receive no benefits or gain from any votes on the library. I will abstain. Alright, no other questions? So, does anyone want to make a motion?
Make motion, prove action item B. Second.
Motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. Public comment? Does anyone want to give comment on action item B? Seen no public comment. Public comment is closed for action item B. Uh, commission deliberation. Comments from the commission? Vice Chair Kill.
I, I'm glad that with. The rigmarole that we've had to go through with MMIA that we were able to find a solution for these folks to be able to stay on the health insurance, so. I appreciate the city staff. Uh, working on that.
Other commissioners? Seen nothing else? Roll call, please. I am looking for a roll call vote, please.
Faith is having some issues with her microphone tonight, so I will, uh, just kind of have some technical issues, so I'll just jump in.
Chair Noots. Thank you, Mrs. Lowey. Abstain.
Vice Chair Kill.
For.
Commissioner Friedman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Lowey. Appreciate the team effort, making it seamless for us. Alright, so we have a couple more action items and we're just about at the seven o'clock hour. So I would like it if we could take our break now and then come back and we'll talk about. Our last two action items. I want to give us ten minutes today. There's quite a few people and I want to make sure everybody has time to get their needs met before we come back. So, um, if you haven't joined us for this before. Staff will put a timer on. And we will watch that timer and when the timer counts down, we'll all come back near the end and come back to the meeting. So we'll see you in ten minutes. Excellent, welcome back, everyone. Um, we left off on action item C. So we'll read that now, authorizing. So it's discuss approved tonight, excuse me. Discuss approved deny authorizing the interim city manager to sign an agreement and MOU with M R L. For the installation of concrete crossing services at a public grade crossing DOT number zero nine six nine zero seven four W. In Livingston. Mrs. Lowey.
Thank you, Chair Noots. Last, Faith, to bring up the map for us for um this crossing. It is at. Um, what is now Glassy Baby, but is probably more commonly known as the Heart K. Um. This is simply an improvement that M R L wants to make to the crossing there. Um, because of a right of way, they need our permission to actually improve their tracks. Um, in that space, so this is just um an agreement authorizing. M R L to complete improvements to the area within um what is considered our right of way. Standard practice, we do this all over the town whenever they're doing improvements to various accurate crossings. Thank you.
Chair Noots, you're muted.
Well, that explains a lot. Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. I was gonna ask, could you, um, Mrs. Lowey? Show the map again and like, or cursor over, put your mouse over. So we can just be really clear on where. Thank you. Okay. Alright, so everybody sees it. Um, commissioners, does anybody have questions?
Chair Noots.
Vice Chair Kill.
Mrs. Lowey, there, it looks like there would be a cost to this, to the city, but that Glassy Baby is, is covering that cost. Did I read that correctly?
I'll let Shannon chime in on that one. He has more, um, more direct information because they've worked with him with regards to the right of way access.
Thank you, Ms. Lowey. Um. Good evening again, members of the commission. Um, so since early June, I've been working with Nico. And Jan, who represent Glassy Baby. Uh, we involve Jim Bieber, the engineering division manager at M R L. Uh, this is a request from Glassy Baby to improve the railroad crossing. At this unknown city right of way. It is just east of Rustad Lane, which if, if you're familiar with where Rustad Lane, it is actually. Uh, a road that dead ends into a berm and that crossing was taken out several years ago. So before you deny is, is actually the agreement between the city and M R L. That is required because it is a city right of way and then Courtney and Jessen. Uh, who represents, uh, is the attorney for Glassy Baby, uh, did a wonderful job on an MOU that really. Spells out that this is a hundred percent a pass through of cost to Glassy Baby and what their responsibilities are for additional asphalt. That is required by M R L for fifty feet on either side of this crossing and any associated traffic control. Uh, in addition to any future maintenance that be, may be necessary for this crossing, so. I really feel like we've, um, dotted our i's, crossed our t's on this one and it's been nice to get to know. The new engineering, uh, folks at M R L and establish a relationship with Classy Baby as well. So. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to get into more detail. Just, just so you know, um, as you can see on the estimate on page ninety-nine. That is material costs only. Um, M R L is not charging for the labor and equipment to do this. And this crossing is going to be thirty-two feet wide. And I have asked that that could be widened in the future if there's. Uh, more improvements necessary such as pedestrian trails, sidewalks, multi-use pass, whatever, so. Um, but at this time, it's primarily going to serve a, a private access for semi-traffic and, and. Employees in and out of the Glassy Baby, uh, production area. I yield.
Vice Chair Kail, you have the floor.
Okay. Thank you, Shannon. And I think that you answered my other, what my other question was going to be about the. The asphalt, the asphalt on either end. And so Glassy Baby is picking up the cost for that as well, is what it sounded like to me. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm curious, uh, based on what we've heard from staff, if that potential for improvements. In the distant future would, if that agreement's in writing somewhere. That they would allow the agreement, uh, if they would allow the improvements. Is that agreement in writing anywhere? Or is that just more of a ca- a casual conversation?
So the, the MOU between the city and Glassy Baby in particular, I think, is included in the packet after the M R L agreement. If that's what you're referring to.
I was thinking about that you mentioned that there could be potential, if necessary, for improvements for widened crossing, a widened. Crossing to include multi-moral transportation. If that. That's, so that's not in the MOU, but that was just a, the beginning of a conversation you had, or?
That was just part of doing due diligence to make sure that if it needed to be, uh, expanded from thirty-two and a half feet to accommodate. Uh, you know, a typical street, typical section, uh, that includes boulevard sidewalks, um, that that would. This design would accommodate that in the future. Um, that, that would require. Glassy Baby going through the subdivision process to develop on that city parcel.
That is very helpful. Thank you so much. That's just what I was looking for. Thank you. That gives me clarity. Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion, discuss approve deny action item C.
Make a motion to prove action item C. Second.
Motion by Schwartz, second by Friedman. Uh, public comment, please. If anyone wants to give comment on action item C. I am not seeing any. All right, so public comment for action item C is closed. Commission deliberation. No comments? All right. Seen no commission deliberation. Roll call, please.
Chair News.
Or.
Vice Chair Kail. Or Commissioner Friedman.
Or.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Lyons.
Or.
Just want to get clarity. Was that Mel that said for when you called Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Faith. So motion passes.
Say four again.
I think Faith got it. It sounds like Faith confirmed.
Yeah, he said four.
Yep, thank you. It just sounded like. I wasn't sure whose voice that was on my end. Okay, thank you. Motion passes for action item C. So now we're moving on to action item D. Before we begin, I just, I know a lot of folks are at this meeting for this agenda items. I just want to do a quick overview of how this portion of the meeting is going to go. So everybody is following, uh, the commission process. So this is based on our handbook and Montana land use. And planning statute. So. First of all, the public has a right to the same information as the elected body before they give their comments. And it's also true that the planning board is the body where we got the public hearing. So if there's new information presented tonight. That the planning board has not, that wasn't submitted as evidence to the planning board. Um, for the public hearing, considering the subdivision, then as the commission, we will need to consider. Whether we need a subsequent public hearing at the planning board pursuant of Montana Code seven six dash three dash six one five. So here's how the order of events will go, just to make sure everybody understands the process. First, I'll ask the city manager to introduce the topic. Then Mrs. Lowey will call on staff people of her choosing. And they will share all the relevant information for our consideration. So I expect she might call on. Planning and building department, public works, legal department. Um, it's all up to her discretion as the interim city manager. Then I will offer the developer up to ten minutes to present to the commission. And then the Commissioners will have opportunity to ask clarifying questions before I open up to a motion. So when the commission makes a motion, it will be in the affirmative. Like we always do at meetings. Um, and the commission, after the commission makes a motion. And have a second, then I will invite public comment. All right, I think that's enough information for now about process. And so now I'll read the item that we're going to discuss. So action item D, discuss approve deny Mountain View subdivision preliminary plat approval, Mrs. Lowey.
Thank you, Chair News, and, um, I will offer a very brief overview and I think it, um. Maybe prudent to bring, um, staff in when we have more pointed questions. About specific items. I think that may be kind of a, a better use of time and a better way to address. Concerns as they come up and, and we move through this. So, um, to that end, this is a subdivision that has come. Before you, after going through the normal process for the planning board. Planning board did entertain, um, in its last meeting, two motions. One was an approval with approximately fifteen to twenty different conditions. That, um, motion did not pass. The subsequent motion was to deny the subdivision and that was, um, ultimately the final recommendation. Of the planning board after its review. The, the documents concerning, um, the subdivision, the planned layout. Kind of how they, how they look to divide those lots within that, um, plot of land. Is included in the packet as well as, um, we have received some letters of support. Um, in the meantime, that have come in since the planning board meeting. Those have been put out publicly as addendums and we also. Have received letters of concern or, um, not supporting this subdivision as well. Those are. Both in the packet as well as, um, can be viewed. On the planning board meeting, um, which is available publicly on our website as well. This subdivision is out towards, um, it's on what's commonly known as P F L's property. That was annexed into the city limits approximately eighteen years ago. It is zoned highway commercial. Which allows for multiple uses. And, um, at this point, I, I can tell that there's, you know, quite a bit of, um. Public here that wants to, to speak on it as they have at the planning board meetings as well. So I won't, um, belabor the introduction much longer, except to say that. This is a, this is a subdivision request coming before you. That appears to me all of the requirements, um, for a subdivision to come before you. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lowey. I'm looking, uh, first of all, I didn't get any letters. In my packet and I'm wondering if it's just my packet again, or if other Commissioners did not receive letters in the packet and also. I do not see any letters from the public as an addendum on our website.
They, um, they were emailed out to you and I believe they were to be posted on the website. Um, we got a couple of emails in. Um, from folks that were in support. We got a couple of emails that were not in support. Um, so it's kind of a, kind of a mix, but I did want to make you aware that those are out there and I believe Faith has forwarded all those to you on email. And we will, um, if they're not on the website currently, we will certainly get them out. They've been coming in even as we've been getting into the meeting, so.
Okay, and then did you, did you, it sounded like you said that there were letters in the packet. I don't see any letters in our packet. Did I misunderstand what you said or did you indicate there were letters?
I believe so. There's a large packet included, um, from, um, the sub divider.
Yes, did, other Commissioners, just a quick check in. Does, I know that my packet has been. Different in the past. Do other Commissioners have letters in their packet from the public? I want to do a check in with each one of you. So Vice Chair Kail, do you have letters in your packet?
I do not have public comment letters in my packet. I do have. Letters that were a response from the applicant who said something, sent. Letters out to F W P and other such entities. And I do have those. I did not receive any public comment in my packet. Um, and I have the only public comment that I have seen from the public hearing, um, so the planning board hearing. Um, I was able to find one public comment from Brunswick Park County that was posted on the planning board page. But I have seen no other public comment from the planning board process.
Okay, thank you. So just to check in, Mrs. Lowey, when you said letters, did you mean the letters that were included? Between the developer and the agencies or were, I was under the impression you meant from the public.
No, there are the letters between the developer and the agencies and there have been, um, approximately. At least two, I'm trying to scroll through my email, at least.
Well, I'm just meaning the packet, just to read there.
Come through.
Okay.
I'm just trying to make sure we're getting all, just be sure that you're aware of all public comment that we've received, leading up to this meeting.
Thank you so much. Okay, so other Commissioners, I have letters between the developer and the agencies. I do not have public comment in my packet. Um, Lyons, Friedman, or Schwartz, do any of you have a public comment in your packet?
It's not in the packet, but I've received lots of comment via email.
I've had, I've had emails.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sounds like we're all on the same page. Thanks for clarity, everyone. That's useful. All right, so. Mrs. Lowey wants to not call on staff right now. Um, so now the next portion, we will invite. Mr. Fields, I believe is here. Hello? So we will invite, um, Mr. Field and any of his representatives if he wishes. To take up to ten minutes to present to the Commission. And if you need to share your screen, I believe that staff can help facilitate. Screen sharing if there's anything you wanted to show us on screen. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Chair News. Um, whoever added my full name, would you please delete the terminal S on my last name? I'm not related to the flying nun. Since we have ten minutes, I'm going to be really brief. The history of this is that eighteen years ago, we worked with the city of Livingston to. We requested to be annexed into this city. Because we thought that while we have a three hundred gallon a minute well. And could easily, plenty of room for septic, we just thought that obviously eventually. There's going to be more city in this direction, given our limited geography. So therefore, we. Uh, worked with the city. Uh, we're in, uh, we were in about two million dollars in today's dollars to bring. Over a mile of city sewer and water out so that it would be available. And this was part of the long-term infrastructure plan. Of the city that we participate in in good faith. Um, and then, since then, we were able to sell six and a half acres to a developer for FedEx. They put in, at the city's request, a mini-loop or a sub-loop. So that's twenty-two hundred linear feet of sewer and water that will become city infrastructure and eleven hundred linear feet of. Uh, city-grade road curb gutter sidewalk, streetlights. I think we have to plant some trees as well. And that, that then means the entire original seventy-two acres. It consists of. Twenty-six acres in the middle that is commercial, essentially warehouse-like stuff. Uh, and also office-like stuff as well as about. I think we have figured twenty-four acres of open space, which about nineteen is, um. Federal jurisdictional wetlands. Obviously, the plan is to keep it that way. And then some other areas kind of hilly, so we decided to call that hiking and open space. And we have worked for quite some time, worked with Sanderson Stewart and worked with, um. The representatives of the city to make sure that we did this in such a way that it fits into the city's plan. Some people have said this is sprawl. That is exactly the opposite of what it is. We've been in the city for eighteen. Years. So this is not sprawl. This is infill. And I don't know if anybody wants to pull the map up, but it's in the packet. Everybody can see it. There is a big chunk of already developed land in the middle and there's a little thin strip around the outside. So it is our intent to, or it is our application to divide this into half acre to one acre parcels. And then to let the market decide because, uh, we do not intend to be the builders of either. Uh, residential or commercial structures, but to let the market decide what really is best. We've been told by land, uh, land use planners, including Sanderson Stewart, who's on the phone tonight. That the north and east would be ideal for commercial and the south could be a mix of commercial and then the southeast. Residential. And I would expect, I've had a number of. Builders approached me and say, hey, would you save one of those lots for me? I want to build a couple eightplexes because this town is short of housing. So I don't control and P F L doesn't control what will happen on that land. We can influence it. We can decide. Who and for what we want to sell to. And I would just say that if you have not read the memo from the interim city manager. And the city attorney and the city planner, they have made very clear that we are. We have followed every rule, crossed every T, dotted every I, and that this is a subdivision. That really needs to be approved because we're not asking for any variances or anything like that. And a lot of people have said, oh, this needs a variance, that needs a variance. We strongly disagree. And at this point, I would like to turn it over to our attorney, Bill Fanning of Bozeman. He is a longtime Montanan. He also is a former resident, uh, of Park County. I think he was up in Clyde Park. And he is an expert on land use, zoning, water rights, et cetera. So, Mr. Fanning, would you please, uh, take the floor for me and yield back when you're done? And I just consumed five of our ten minutes.
Okay, I will try to go quickly. My name is Bill Fanning. Uh, I'm an attorney who is representing, uh, Livingston West and Andrew. Field in this. And I'm not unfamiliar with the area and having lived in Livingston in the two thousands. Remember seeing the printing for less building going in and just, just, uh, you know. At, at that time, the only thing out there was the truck stop and bagel mania, I think. So. But, you know, Andrew did a good job with that development and there's no reason to believe that this isn't going to follow that pattern. I, I've reviewed the materials and, and in my estimation, this is responsible development. It occurs in the city limits. It's connected to the city infrastructure. It's connected to the city infrastructure. You know, we're not talking about exempt wells or exempt septic fields. There is no taking of valuable farmland or wildlife habitat. Now, I'm a lawyer. I'm not a salesman, so I'll leave the, the selling to Andrew, who's an entrepreneur. And a good community businessman. So I'm going to stay in my lane and just tell you what my legal analysis shows on this subdivision. And so having reviewed the application against the relevant Montana codes. It's my legal opinion that the application is complete and meets the six relevant criteria and that it should be approved. So there's a lot of talk about, you know, what policies and I listened to the planning board meeting on, about what you have to consider here tonight. But there are six and this is in 763604. The effect on agriculture, the effect on agricultural water facilities, the effect on local services. The effect on the natural environment, the effect on wildlife habitat and the effect on public health and safety. And without going into excruciating detail, I believe all of those have been met. And those, and those facts are presented in the packet and also in Jim Woodall's memo, your, your planning director and your expert. Um, I'm happy to kind of elaborate on those if anyone has further questions of, about. Why we think that those, those are the, are the six. Criteria that you, that you have to look at closely and those is what you, you know, you can base your denial or your approval upon. So that's my opinion, but you don't have to just take my opinion. You've, you've got three other documents that Andrew referred to. You, I think you should consider what your attorney has said, um, whose memo, uh, September 30th memo. States in no uncertain terms what your task is here tonight. You know, she states that only the completeness of the subdivision application remains to be reviewed. And I'm just, I'm citing from a couple of her. A couple of her sentences. She also says you can't place limitations on uses authorized by zoning. This is an illegal conditioning under state law. You know, she points out that if, if you, if you're unhappy with the zoning. And you don't think it matches with the growth plan, for example, you have to start by changing the zoning. You can't use the, the, the growth plan, which was adopted later, to go back and dissolve what was legally, uh, established in zoning. I mean, that zoning goes through a process and that process results, it's a public process, it's a due process, it results in a. Uh, a document that gives people certainty about what to do. And. That is what currently exists and that is the rubric under which you have to review this application. The growth policy is important for informing those zoning decisions and zoning regulations. But there's a regulation and then there's a policy. So the other thing you should consider is your interim city manager's letter, which. You know, it says in no uncertain terms that, that. There's a potential liability here for going outside of the statutes, going outside of the rules that you. Are required to review this subdivision under. You know, when, when your city manager provides you with your insurance policy, that's something you should, should, you should look at carefully. You know, again, I would refer you to her letter because I'm running close to time here. Uh, third, I would, I would review and listen to what your expert, your planning director says in his memo. Um, and he, he reiterates the same, the same principles that. Zoning is the result of gross policy and the zoning that's in place that Mr. Field is operating under was done under a growth policy. It's not the current one, but we have a new growth policy. We have to go back and change the zoning if that's how you want to do it. So he says growth policy cannot undo what was lawfully done under a prior document. I think that's, that's pretty, pretty succinct. So, you know, when you look at the legal cases that are brought under this, under the statute. You can see what happens is. People sue because they believe that their zoning is not. Commensurate with the growth policy, not the other way around. So that's, we've kind of got the cart before the horse here. So I think I'm right down at the end of my time here. I would just say that, you know, Mr. Field did a, did an excellent job with his first development. Uh, and I think you should, uh, you know, not just listen to me, but your, your three unbiased, uh, you know, experts as well. I'm available for any questions if I run over my time.
All right. So thank you folks for sharing. So the next part of our meeting. Commissioners can ask clarifying questions before we move to a motion. Um, commissioners. Uh, I want to make it clear that we need to get as much information to the public. As possible before we open it to public comment. And if we have a lot of follow-up questions and a lot of new information coming. We're going to have to open it to public comment again, because they need access to the same information that we do. Have access to before they give comment. So please just keep that in mind, um. When asking questions. And again, if something new is presented, there is that stipulation in code that we have to reconsider another public hearing. So first up. Commissioner questions. Who would like to ask questions or get clarity first? Commissioner Lyons.
Um, so my, my first question is, well, it's directed through Lisa to whomever is best suited to answer it. And it is. So we've gotten a lot of information as a commission about our responsibilities. Um, and also about the planning board's responsibilities with respect to making findings. In their, in their process of making a decision. Um, and Chair Noots was talking about the potential. Need if new information arises to have another public hearing and that the planning board meeting is the. Is the venue for a public hearing. So I'm curious if anyone on staff believes that any new information. Has come to light to the commission that was not made clear to the planning board, um, when they made their decision.
Thanks. That's a great question. Mrs. Lowey?
Yep, I, I do not believe so. There is nothing fundamentally different. Um, that has been put before the commission that was not before. The planning board is short of a couple of letters of support that have come in in the last few hours and, um, letters of protest that have come in in the last few hours. Um, but phenomenally speaking, the, the obligations to issue findings are a known requirement. So. I don't, I don't think any of the information that I've put before you in terms of. What the planning board needed to do or didn't complete as part of their process. Um, is new information that fundamentally impacts the decision tonight.
So who, who at the planning board should have known about that fundamental obligation of the planning board?
Every member.
Okay, so it's, it's incumbent, incumbent upon the members to study MC, of our volunteer boards to study MCA.
To, to know some of these requirements, especially when, when we're in land use. At, at this point, I mean, your. Your ultimate decision was a denial and there really were not. I guess specific reasons to deny in that recommendation that was given. It was just kind of a, we deny. Um, so.
Well, hav- having, having been one of the people who, who made comments and made that decision, I would, I would actually strongly push back on that. Uh, and I would suggest that maybe it was. I, maybe the chair's responsibility. I'm not sure who, whose responsibility it is to. Take that three hour long meeting and turn it into a document to be submitted to the board, but I, I, I don't think to say that. Nothing or to the commission, I don't think to say. That that product wasn't produced to the commission is to say that there were no legitimate findings created by the board. Uh, but this is a, this is a, we're, we're, we're splitting hairs and I'm just asking questions. So. I just want to make sure, so I'm just trying to understand if, if, if you or your staff believe. That the findings that the planning board made were legitimate and we can consider them, or were they illegitimate and need to be. Informed with new information or, or thrown out? I, I need to understand how we, how we take into account the findings of the planning board.
The, the only official findings of the, of the planning board that went on record by vote were that the planning board denied recommending. The subdivision. So that's the, the conditioned one didn't go through. So you, your final decision was to not recommend it was just a, a blanket denial.
Okay, and I saw, and I saw from the, the planner that. We, that we as a commission are required to make findings in order for our decision to be legitimate.
Mm-hmm, you are.
Typically, those findings would be made by the planning board. Is that correct?
Ultimately, as, um, as the ones with final authority for the decision. That needs to happen at the commission level. The planning board is a, is a recommendation. Not a final decision. So that obligation to provide findings in writing is to you, the commission.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Lyons, um, you still have the floor and I guess I'm. Thank you for that question and also you are our commissioner appointee to the planning board. So. This would be an appropriate time also if there's additional information, background information about what happened at that planning board meeting that you want to share with the rest of us.
Um, well, when we, when we're deliberating, I'll, I'll share, um, the points that, that I made during. Uh, the, the planning board meeting. Uh, I, I'll be making some similar points, so I'll just cover that. Um, I think that the majority of the discussion that occurred in the planning board meeting, um, revolved around. It revolved around hearing from the public and what the public sentiment was on the topic. Um, there were additional comments about how this, how the subdivision would comport with the growth policy. We've heard from Attorney Fanning and Attorney Willen. Um, and, um. And our staff planner about how the growth fa- policy may inform decisions. Um, regarding subdivision. Um, I'll, I will actually reiterate what that, what that is, is that this, that the growth policy may not be. The sole reason for denial of a subdivision application. So. Uh, there's been a lot of emphasis on the lack of, of authority of. The growth policy. Um, the growth policy can inform decisions, but it cannot be the, the sole deciding factor for the denial of a subdivision. So that was, that, that encompasses the majority. So I ma- I made some specific points relating to the subdivision criteria. Um, which I will cover when we're deliberating. Um, the, the board in general. Um, was discussing how it related to the growth policy. Um, and then there were, and then also the board was discussing. Whether or not to give credence to the sentiment of the public that, uh, was shared during the planning board meeting. And I'll, I'll yield for now.
Thank you so much. Do other commissioners have, um, questions, follow-up questions? Remember any questions will go through me to the interim. Does anybody else have questions?
Chair Noots.
Uh, yeah, Vice Chair Cale.
I, I want to specifically ask. Was there written public comment provided to the planning board? During the public hearing besides. Just the Friends of Park com- Friends of Park County comment that wasn't, that was on the, the planning board page. Was there additional public comment that? I have not, or we have not seen nor been summarized?
Thank you, Mrs. Lowey. Was there any additional comment to the planning board other than the Friends of Park County for the public hearing?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So there was no other written public comment for the public hearing?
Not that I'm aware of, correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Okay. Um. Vice Chair Cale, you still have the floor.
I, yep.
Right. Any other follow-up questions? Otherwise, I have a clarifying question. Let's, uh, Commissioner Lyons, I see your hand. Let's give all the commissioners a chance to go and then we'll come back to you. Okay. Folks in City Hall, Commissioner Schwartz and Commissioner Friedman, do either of you have any questions that you want asked at this time?
Um, I did, um, over the past week and, uh, my questions have been answered. I haven't clarified.
Okay.
To, uh, this morning, actually. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, I have one question. Um. So I am curious, uh, Mrs. Lowey, you can pass this question along if you need to, but I'm curious how the water loop that we talk about. For this side of town, how it relates to the subdivision, or maybe it does, or maybe it doesn't relate to the subdivision, but I'm curious if it does and how it does.
I'm sorry, you were turned, you were turned away from your microphone for about half of that question, so I didn't.
I'll try again. I have, I have like a spread of notes around me because I have very little tables in front of my computer. Um, so sorry about that. I'll try again. So often when we talk about this part of town. The conversation of a water loop comes up. So we don't have a dead end. I am curious if that relates to this subdivision in some way. And if the answer is yes, then how does it relate to the subdivision?
Okay, I will turn the water loop question over to, uh, Director Holmes as our public works director.
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow members of the commission. Um. As the city's representative on the planning board. The discussion, I thought we had a, a good discussion about the water loop and, um, I. Actually made a motion to approve the subdivision based on the condition that. This development pays its proportionate share for said west end water loop. So. Uh, while it is not necessary, uh, with the current PFL. And FedEx facility as this. Develops and we have a better understanding of what water demands are needed for highway commercial. And those associated fire flows, um, there will be a point where looping this system is certainly going to be required by the city. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I'm just taking some notes. And then I'll have another question. Okay. And then my, my follow-up to that would be. Um, how it's paid for. So it sounds like. You said proportionate share. So I just want to make sure I understand that process, what that looks like. I have some idea, but. Not 100%. So I just want some clarity.
So again, this is something that, um, I had initial discussions and, and we were actually moving forward with this with. Mr. Nauman, who is, uh. Andrew's consultant that works for Sanderson Stewart, um. We have requested and, and again, uh, this would be based on approval of this and moving forward. With, uh, looking at, uh, capacity requirements that, that the city, that information the city would need for both sewer and water. There will be a time, again, depending on how this is developed. Um, FedEx is a large building on six and a half acres, but it. Is going to use very little water from a domestic standpoint. Uh, if there's a hotel built here, obviously that demand is dramatically increased. So. It really, um, you know, the city has. Measures in place with our design standards and specification guidelines, our site plan approval process. Where we can evaluate what capacity we have available, um. As each one of these lots would be developed and. And certainly that communication with potential developer, developers in the preliminary stages would certainly give us a better idea of. If and when that is necessary. Um, we do need, keep in mind that there's an additional almost 40 acres. Of property that is across Highway 10 further west than this parcel. And, uh, part of the FedEx requirements for water sewer extensions is we require them to extend water and sewer to the Highway 10. Uh, intersection. So if and when the Jesson property is developed. We can jar, the developer can jack and bore and get water and sewer to that west side of Highway 10. So there's, there's some moving parts in all this, but our system is modeled. And we've worked well with, with Sanderson and Stewart and we understand. That each time we have a development in, in the city on what, uh, we were, we require. Water and sewer and stormwater design reports to be able to put into our. Water model and be able to understand, uh, what the capacity is of our system. Now. I do not want to complicate this and drag this on any further it needs to be, but, um, you know, there's an additional. Situation with this area is it, it does all go through a booster station and the fire flows specifically for PFL and FedEx, um. Need to go through that booster station for fire, to provide adequate fire flows, which is not an uncommon piece of infrastructure in, in. In a water system, but it does add another layer. Of complexity in our model, uh, to make sure that we can provide that capacity.
Uh, thank you. So my question was about cost and who pays for it?
So I think there's a lot of different opportunities there, um. You know, we could create an. You know, we could create an SID similar to what we're doing on the west or the east end with our sewer, regional sewer project. Um. We could um use potentially some of the TIF money that uh the West End TIF has generated to help pay for a portion of that. Um. And and really, as these lots develop, or if the Jesson property is looked at subdividing, um again, each of these developers would need to pay their proportionate share of that extension.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Holmes, thank you. That is my clarifying question. Um, other commissioners, otherwise I'm gonna go back to Commissioner Lyons. All right, Commissioner Lyons, round two. You're up. You have the floor.
Thanks. Um, so I I just want to address some um confusion that I'm having about the the intent of the subdivision. I think that uh anyway, this goes to this question, if I may, Ms. Lowey, is directed to Mr. Field, and I'm I'm curious if he saw the front page article in the Enterprise from the twenty second that that talked about the subdivision.
I can ask Mr. Field since uh he's not staff, so Mrs. Lowey will just direct to staff. So, Mr. Field, if you don't mind.
I did.
And how did you feel uh the subdivision was characterized? How how did you feel about how the subdivision is characterized in that article?
Um. It was characterized with substantial inaccuracies, including uh the quote from the Friends of Park County. It misstated by more than a hundred percent the acreage involved. Um, and it made a bunch of claims. Uh, now, I was quoted as well, so I think the reporter did their job by having both sides um say their piece and did not make any editorial judgment on it, but um, there was a lot of misinformation and just this does this contravenes state subdivision statutes, which uh the interim sitting city manager and the city attorney and our attorney all disagree with.
Um, so so I'm I'm particularly curious. There were three three points in the article, one which they were quoting you, where they referred to it as a as a regi- residential community or residential subdivision. How how what do you think about that characterization?
I did not use the phrase residential subdivision because I'm well aware that this is a highway commercial subdivision that it can include uh many different types of uses.
Okay, um, great. Yeah. So in the at the end of the article, it said um Field, the founder and former CEO of PFL, um said he was not giving out hope on providing more housing to the Livingston community. Um, was was that? Okay, so so you see this as an opportunity to provide housing?
Uh, I see any open lot as an opportunity to provide any use that the zoning uh allows on that. The reason I said residential is we all know that Livingston is in a housing crisis. I suspect, but I do not know. I don't have any memorandums of understanding or letters of intent regarding selling any of this land. Um, I am a free market guy, and I believe the market will decide the highest and best use. It could be a little bit of residential, it could be no residential. Uh, the only inquiry I've had very specifically was for a light manufacturing use.
Okay, thank you. Um. Uh, yeah, I appreciate you answering those specific questions, Mr. Field. Um, so I I have a a question for the the contract planner, Mr. Mr. Nauman. Um. If he would please explain, um, I I this is really for the benefit of of um my fellow commissioners as well as the public, if you would please explain how uh transportation planners uh generate um trip and parking generation estimates, like the the process of the the travel demand modeling. If you could just do like a a very quick description of how that works, so that the we and the public understand how you come to those numbers of predicting um traffic that'll be generated by the development.
Mr. Nauman, are you able to help Mr. or Commissioner Lyons out with that?
Um, yes, Chair Newt, I'd be happy.
Thank you.
Respond. Um, first, I would start by saying that um there is no requirement of of uh the subdivision criteria to generate a formal traffic impact study. Um, at the request of the city planner, we did provide um an initial trip generation calculation, which is in in your packet and in the application that was submitted. And to Commissioner Lyons' point, those um the trip generation analysis, as is clearly stated in the memo, makes assumptions in this case about um theoretical land uses and intensities to then use well-established formulas um from the IT about how many trips said use and intensity would potentially generate. Mr. Woodall's request was to get a sense of the the potential impacts, in particular, um down at the, I think it was the Fifth Avenue and Seventh Avenue um intersections. And so he requested that in the pre-application meeting, and we provided that information using some, again, assumptions as Mr. Fields summarized in his opening comments about commercial uses along Highway ten, um some light industrial uses uh to the south, um sort of along the proposed lots that are sort of most immediately adjacent to Interstate ninety and a handful of lots in the southeast um of the proposed subdivision that would have some uh multifamily residential. So those assumptions were in part to try and reflect the allowable uses under your highway commercial zoning designation and to try and be as representative of those mixes of uses as possible. Um. Not knowing exactly what a single individual lot's use will be in the future. Does that um answer your question, Commissioner Lyons?
Partially, and so what the part of the answer that or the part of the question that you answered was how you are gonna how you're predicting the new generation of trips that could potentially um come from the development of um of these new lots. Um, but there's another, there's another another part of this process when you're predicting delay at intersections that incorporates the land uses of of all of Livingston, right? And it it produces trips from from each parcel um throughout the city of Livingston. Um, so I I'm just gonna go ahead and summarize that process for everyone's sake and not put you on the spot to do that.
That's called the traffic impact study, which we did not perform for the record.
So um so there was not a traffic impact study done related uh related to this subdivision, other than just adding the new trips? Or did or or because I, let's see, on page on page three thirty-five, you've got level of service um existing. And then I believe there was a um oh, existing plus site. So you're you're taking a um a a a previous study and adding the trips generated by this by by this development to that study. Is that correct?
Um. Yes, we did. Again, the request specifically for Mr. Woodall was to paint a picture of what the potential impacts might be on those two intersections. Um, I can tell you that um a traffic impact study produced by Sanderson Stewart um is a completely different report. Um, I've can't recall the last one I saw that was shy of eighty pages in and of itself, and I believe the memo we provided, I can't recall exactly, was, you know, an eight or nine page um initial memo at the request of of Mr. Woodall. So I just want to be clear that it is not um an official traffic impact study.
Got it. Thank you. And so one one final question. Um. Uh, and I I want to say I'm I'm hearing you and recognize that this was not an official traffic impact study. Um. When 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 a when this table, table three on page three thirty-five, is predicting what changes to level of service, and for those who are not um familiar with the transportation lexicon, that basically means how it's a grade for which um an intercept a grade an intersection receives related to the amount of delay expected typically in the morning and 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 evening peak rush hour times. Um, so I'm seeing um the I'm seeing existing plus site level of service in in table three. Um. And I'm wondering if that if so, and then you have your ninety-fifth percentile Q, and again, I'm going to um, I'm gonna just summarize what that means. That means basically ninety-five out of a hundred times, it's not going to be any worse than this. And so my 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 question is, does that take into account? And and I don't does this take into account uh instances where weather has closed down I ninety and all of the traffic from I ninety is coming through Park Street and and Highways ten?
Um, I am assuming, as considering I was not the one that prepared the report, um I don't see any reference to that. And so I'm not sure it counts for that, and I would um question whether even a formal impact study necessarily necessarily would um that that particular condition of a, you know, an I ninety closure. I think um, safe to say um that we all know what level of service that creates in Livingston, and it's, I would think, safe to say also as far as I know, not the intention of the city for to solve that problem um incumbent on any given subdivision application or site plan submittal. So I'm not sure what the relevance of of bringing up the I ninety closures is to the application before you and the criteria established for approval or denial um in state statute.
Uh, I I appreciate you thinking it's not relevant, but I will talk about its relevance when we're deliberating. Um, and that is, that's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Lyons, and thank you, Mr. I feel like I'm mispronouncing your name. Is it Nauman?
Nauman, yes.
Nauman, Nauman. Thank you, Mr. Nauman, for entertaining questions. Um, commissioners, does anyone else have clarifying questions?
Chair Newt, I have a follow up.
Yeah, go ahead. You have the floor.
I I'm wondering um if we can ask uh Director Holmes. Um, again, I I wanted to follow up on his discussion um with you about the booster station, and I I just want to to get some clarity and so we have the booster station. Right now, it sounds like we have enough water pressure to deal with a fire with PFL and FedEx being out there. But as that, if we build this subdivision out, it sounds like there is concern that we would not have enough water pressure um in a fire situation.
Uh, Mrs. Larity, Mrs. Lowey.
Fine.
Commissioner Kail, that's a great question. I really appreciate um the commission's um yes uh due diligence and trying to understand uh our water sewer, stormwaters, transportation, infrastructure in Livingston. So um the Starlow Booster Station was actually paid for by Andrew back when PFL was built. Um. It was required. Uh, it's almost a two-mile-long dead-in-water main, and it consists of a five-horse jockey pump that keeps the residual pressure um at around seventy PSI. It has two twenty-horse uh booster pumps and a fifty horsepower fire flow pump. So fire departments want to see a a minimum of twenty-five hundred um gallons per minute. Um. And that's what this big fire fifty horsepower pump provides, and it is more than adequate for PFL and for FedEx and probably several other fire suppression systems. Um. So again, back to, I think, a previous discussion with Madam Chair Newt's. Um. One of my conditions on approval was requiring this development to make any necessary modifications to the Starlow Booster Station to provide adequate domestic and fire flows for this subdivision. And I feel like that statement in itself protects the city and puts that um puts that responsibility on this development as as it develops, and we get design reports and understand what that impact is on our water distribution system. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Vice Chair Kail, you still have the floor. If you have any other follow up questions?
Oh, you'll.
All right. Anyone else? My clarifying questions have been answered. Uh, Commissioner Lyons, let's just check in with the commissioners in City Hall real quick before we do another round, okay? Um, I just want to check in and see if Commissioners Friedman or Schwartz have any clarifying questions. I I understand that you may not, and that's okay. I just can't see very well, so I want to check in.
Okay, go ahead, Ma'am Chair, Commissioner.
Yes. You have the floor.
On record, that I have uh met with Mr. Fields on September eighteenth of this year. Uh, I met him when he first opened in the downtown operation of Livingston. And this has been quite a while, and he's established a fantastic business for us here locally. And I think he's always been very truthful for the years. I don't know of any parts of the things that he hasn't backed up and done. And as I looked at the proposal, uh when he says he's gonna do something residential, whatever it is, it's all been very thought out, very checked out with the city in a lot of respects. And uh that's my report on that. I just nothing in my relationship with him or looking at the printer less, which is a major business for Livingston that he hasn't backed up and has been a good addition for our city. I yield.
Chair Newt, you're on mute.
I was just, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Friedman, and I just wanted to check, Commissioner Schwartz, uh, you're still good. No more questions from you at this time? Is that correct? Okay, I can't. It's very little on my screen.
Yeah, um, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Commissioner Lyons, you have uh another round of clarifying questions.
One 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 last question, um, and if I may direct this to Mr. Nauman. Um. I'm curious if you can point to me in the application um where the application lies out that a whether a narrower configuration is essential to provide separation of residential development from the traffic arteries.
Mr. Nauman, are you able to help clarify that for us, please?
Um, yes, and Commissioner Lyons is referring to the city of Livingston um subdivision design improvement standards. Um. Section five, letter A, number seven, subsection C, quote, blocks must be wide enough to allow for two tiers of lots unless a narrower configuration is essential to provide separation for of residential development from traffic arteries or unless to overcome specific disadvantages of topography and orientation. And then there's a or unless the governing body approves design consistent irregular shaped blocks um intended by cul-de-sacs. So I believe it's clearly um illustrated in the preliminary plat and the corresponding um exhibit showing the lot layout. And I'll I'm happy to describe what the proposed preliminary plat indeed shows. It's also illustrated, um perhaps a little easier to see in the overall development plan. It's also illustrated, perhaps a little easier to see, in the overall development plan exhibit, which is one of the two-color exhibits provided in the application.
Can we, if you don't mind pausing for just one moment, can we get a screen shared just so we can follow along with what he's describing? Either he allowing him to share the screen or pulling up the, um, image and sharing it that he's describing? Is that possible? Can somebody help us with that?
If we have a screen where I can, I can share.
Okay, thank you.
I believe two eighty-one.
And then Mr. Nauman, I'll, I'll, I'll let you, if you don't mind, uh, communicating with Faith if she's pulling up the image that you're referring to, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, Faith, I think in the order of the packet, there you go. That's the one. It's also, yeah, I think in the staff report.
Okay, great. Then we can follow along with, um, what you're saying. This will be very helpful. Thank you.
So in terms of, of the question about why the blocks do not, why they're not two-tiered, two tiers of lots. Um, I think the critical word, obviously applying this provision to the proposed subdivision is the word unless. And their configuration is basically a product of the existing conditions. And those existing conditions include the existence of the printing-for-less site and development, which is in yellow. And then the FedEx property and, and development that's now constructed in the gray, which is where the cursor is. So those two, um, existing developments are fairly, um, in the center of the entire Livingston West and, and printing-for-less properties. So that is a, an existing site constraint. The other factors are, you're bound on the west and the north by Highway ten, which conveniently has a curvilinear shape and provides a rounded corner there in the, in the northwest. You have I ninety basically establishing the southern boundary. I'd call that a hard constraint. And then in the upper, the north, uh, east corner, there's approximately, again, fourteen to fifteen acres of wetland, which, of course, we're not proposing to subdivide. And then the far southeast, uh, corner, and it's shown in some topographical exhibits also in the application. Obviously, if you're familiar with the site, there's some steep topographies. So to overcome specific disadvantages of topography and orientation, quote-unquote, those are, those are the existing conditions that precluded the street layout and the subsequent lot layout. And, and basically make it not possible to have a traditional street grid network with two tiers of lots that you would, that you would see in a typical, um, more typical subdivision. But again, I think that the relevant piece is unless to overcome specific disadvantages of topography and orientation is the reason why, um, you don't see two tiers. And it's clearly provided in the application via the preliminary plat document and the corresponding map exhibits.
So, so just so I'm clear, the, the explanation of that limitation is left, is, is provided in the map itself and nowhere else in, in the application. Is that right?
It is not articulated in, in narrative. Um, I would refer you to the subdivision regulations. That's one of several hundred provisions in the subdivision regulations. Um, and no, we did not, um, articulate in narrative compliance with the other dozens and dozens of subdivision regulations either.
You, um, finally, you, you mentioned topography work. And I, could you direct me to a topographic map, um, that I could interpret to understand that?
Um, yes, there is. We provided a, a set of civil engineering sheets, and those are in the application. And that sheet number, uh, topography is shown on sheet, uh, sheet C two-point-one.
Just to clarify, I think that's, um, page, oh, the writing is so small. I need a magnifying glass. Uh, let's see, one fifty-one, two, three, one fifty-four of our packet, I think. Um, Faith, are you able to pull it up just so we can make sure we're? I was going to say on the same page without being funny. But literally to make sure we're looking at the same map that he's referring to. I think it's page one fifty-four.
Yes, that, that's sheet C two-one, which is, uh, the existing site sheet. And then also on, um, same, same map, same topography. But sheet, um, C five-point-one shows the topography, but, and that is the grading and storm drainage plan as well.
Okay, so what, um, the, the justification for for the lack of applicability of that subdivision regulation is, is made via, via maps in the application?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's all my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you again for the questions and for responding to the questions, both of you. Um, any other clarifying questions, Commissioners? If not, I'll refer to my notes where we are on process. Let's see here. All right. If we don't have any other questions from the commission, then it's time for a motion. I want to remind everyone that motions are made in the affirmative. So we make positive statements when we make motions as a commission.
Are you calling for a motion, or have you?
Um, yes, I'm calling for a motion, and I just want to remind folks that I'm only accepting motions in the positive and the affirmative. It's a lot, makes a lot clearer process for us.
I make a motion to, um, approve Mountain View subdivision for preliminary plat. Second.
So we have a motion to approve by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. And next, I'm going to open it up to public comment. But first, um, some reminders. So public, um, I want to remind you that comments about individuals are not allowed. Comments may only be about the subdivision in front of us and the city commission's jurisdiction in relation to this agenda item. So we won't be taking remarks about anyone at the meeting or not at the meeting. That's not what this meeting is about. Um, all questions must go through the chair. So the public, you may ask questions. But this will not be an informal Q and A session where developers, staff, people are informally responding to the public. You can ask questions and commissioners can ask follow-up questions after the public comment is closed, and that's at the commissioner's discretion. So I just want to be clear that there's no informal dialogue between commission staff, members of the public, and the developers. After public comment is closed, if commissioners have follow-up questions, they will direct them to me, and I will direct them to Mrs. Lowey if they're for staff, as that's her role as the interim city manager. So that's where we are in our agenda.
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, I see, I hear you, Commissioner Schwartz. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, before you open the public, um, I, I need to clarify the, uh, clarify the motion that it should be, um, you know, conditional approval. Conditional approval of, of the subdivision as recommended by staff. And, uh, and the conditions are listed on pages one twenty-four and twenty-five.
Okay, thank you for that, Commissioner Schwartz. So to clarify the motion, the motion is, um, approval of Mountain View subdivision with the conditions outlined in the staff report on page one twenty-four and one twenty-five. And then Friedman, you have the second. Does that fall in line with your second? Are you still seconding that motion? Uh, Commissioner Friedman?
Is my message, yeah.
So he said yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you so much for clarifying before we open to public comment. All right, so I think I made it clear the process. So if you want to give public comment, you can raise your hand or put your name in the chat. And when I call on you, I'm asking you to state your name and your address for the record. You'll have four minutes. And when your time is near the end, you'll see a timer pop up on the screen that staff has, and that'll indicate to you that your time is ending for your comment. So Patricia Grabo, I see your hand up. Could you please state your name and your address for the record?
Yes, uh, let me see if I can get the video. So you can see me there. Hi. Uh, Patricia Grabo, two oh-four East Calendar Street, Livingston. I just was wondering if Faith got the email I sent that shows the picture on it. Otherwise, I'll just show it to you. Okay. First of all, I want to clarify that, uh, of course, Mr. Field does not own printing-for-less anymore. Um, also, the growth policy under which this, uh, this was approved, I was the single person who had any input into that form, former growth policy as opposed to this growth policy in which fifteen hundred people, uh, had input into, into its existence. And it took months of, of, of effort to create a growth policy that said to things smart growth, which means that you grow from the downtown out. And, and also, it is a very detailed growth policy and, and should not be ignored. Okay, so there were so many fallacies. I was a city commissioner when this was, this property was actually annexed. And there is so much information we did not have. Uh, let me just go into a couple of things. First of all, this, and this property will be devastating to our downtown. Right now, because of the floods, we're about twenty percent down in terms of business. We have now, exit three thirty-three has become a competing commercial space for our commercial downtown. This is the second competing commercial space for our, our downtown. I've spent twenty-three years trying to keep our downtown viable. And, um, Park County takes in about twenty-four, two hundred and forty million dollars a year as tour, from tourists. We have a lot of studies that have said, for example, uh, there are about one point eight-nine million cars that go on I ninety past Livingston, Montana. Of course, Easy Pickings is printing-for-less, so they take the money that we, our, our beautiful downtown would otherwise be getting, and they make a profit off it. I don't blame these guys for wanting to make a lot of money. But it is at the expense of one of the most beautiful downtowns in this country. We have research that indicates that if you go, uh, through, uh, I, you take, uh, exit three, three thirty-three, only five percent of those cars will actually come into our downtown. And that is true also here at exit three thirty. So don't assume there's going to be any profit or any help for our downtown from this, the subdivision. In fact, it's going to be devastating to the existence of our downtown. Secondly, we really, we really turned this whole thing down at the election of two, I just want to mention it, election of twenty-twenty-one. But I, also, when I was on the city commission and I opposed this, I don't know if you can see this, but this is, this is a, a shot of, yeah, you can kind of see it. This is a shot of the lake that is on the other side of the highway. And I would like to bring the commissioners out to see this lake. This is not what this subdivision, uh, narrative has said the water situation is. We have a huge lake, and it's a lake on the other side of the, of the railroad tracks. And in fact, the Eggland property cannot be annexed by the city because of its proclivity to the railroad tracks. They own thirty-four acres on the other side of the.
Thank you, Patricia.
So we are, we are talking about a, a tributary of the Yellowstone River.
Patricia, thank you so much. That, that's your four minutes. Thank you so much. And yes, we could see your picture. So on the screen, so thank you for that. Okay. So I, we are coming up on the next hour and a half mark. As Commissioners, we made an agreement to take a break every one and a half hours, and we're coming up on the one, the next one and a half hour mark. So I want to make sure you can see the Commissioners. Commissioners, are you ready for another break? I do see a lineup for more public comment, but I want to make sure that we're also getting our breaks in, and then we can come back to public comment. Does it work for you all, Commissioners? We can take a quick five-minute break this time. Commissioners, Freeman?
So moved.
Okay, so I just want to make sure everybody is, okay, so does five minutes work for you folks in City Hall? Is that enough time? Or do you need a little more time since the room is more full, Commissioner Schwartz?
I think they've already turned off their camera.
Okay, so let's do five minutes then. Five is fine. Okay, thank you for that. So we'll take five minutes, and I'll see you all soon. We can go back to public comment. Thank you. So welcome back from our break. We are going to pick up where we left off with public comment on the Mountain View subdivision preliminary plat approval. And next up is Deborah Kimball. Could you please start by saying your name and your address for the record, and then you'll have four minutes?
Uh, hello, Commissioners. My name is Deb Kimball. I am a, a long-time Park County resident. I live at seventy-nine above Paradise Trail. Been here twenty-seven years. And, um, I'm, this is my first Livingston as city commissioner meeting. So I did not make it to the planning board meeting, but I wanted to weigh in to say, I support the planning board's hesitancy about approving, uh, this, uh, application. I am concerned when I hear people like the developer, Mr. Field, who comments that, um, he is a free-market kind of guy, that he's just willing to open this up to, he's not sure. It might be residential, might be commercial, you know? It's zoned for any of that. And, and that's a worry because I don't want to turn into a Bozeman, you know, nineteenth street where I've got, uh, competitors to my downtown from Perkins and Subway and City Brew. And, you know, um, I want our downtown to stay the first stop. I don't want it to be this stopping, uh, point where you can grab a sandwich and some gas and then miss Livingston altogether. So, um, I'm concerned that it's sixty-four acres, uh, thirty-nine lots that may be as small as a quarter of an acre, that there really is not a sound plan. It is so vague. I, I'm all for development. I'm all for Livingston is going to grow. And I understand smart growth, green growth, every type of growth. I'm a proponent of it, and I want to hear those plans. But Mr. Field, I don't hear a plan here. I hear winging it. I hear, uh, let's just see what happens. That I've got these lots, let's just see, let's just see who wants to, um, you know, get in business with me. So I'm concerned, uh, the horror stories of what could become to our small town is a worry to me. So as a member of the public, I hope the Commissioners will understand that I have a hesitancy. It's even stronger than that, uh, to say I want to approve this, uh, application. I think it needs to go back to the drawing board. Give us more concrete information about who you see might be in these slots. And then I think the Commissioners should entertain this development. So, um, thank you for the time tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Deb. Um, I'm going to make a quick request of staff. Are you able to move all the Commissioners? I can't control the zone since I'm not a host, but can you please move the Commissioners to the top of? can you please move the commissioners to the top of the screen because it makes it easier for me to track the commissioners, which is something I need to do as chair? I don't know if you can just grab the rectangles and move them up to the top, but that would be helpful.
Madam Chair, I cannot do anything while participants have their hands raised.
Okay, okay, Faith, I'll wait until we're done with public comment, and then if you're able to after that again, that would be helpful. Thank you for clarifying things. Okay. Nick Runyon, I did see that your hand was up before break. Did you still want to go next, or do you want to raise your hand later?
Thank you. I'm happy to wait.
Okay, you all just watch for your hand then and take you off my list for now. But please do come back if you'd like to give a comment. So next on the list is Chris King. Could you please just start by saying your name and address?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Chris King. I'm at four twenty-five West Chinook. And I am also the executive director of the Downtown Business Improvement District and Explorer Livingston. And so I'm extremely concerned about how this could develop to include retail and hospitality businesses that, as people have mentioned, would be a detriment to downtown, which is our unique and driving economic gem that we have in Livingston for both locals and visitors alike. I'm also concerned by, I would love for the markets to develop one-to-two-bedroom rental dense housing to address our workforce housing crisis. However, this location is not in value in aligned with the values that are outlined in our growth policy for it to be bikeable or walkable without any infrastructure or sidewalk system. It's extremely limited and vehicular dependent for any kind of housing that is out there. And and I understand that this zoning happened before the current growth policy plan, but I don't think that that means that the values that have that are in the growth policy are irrelevant. And I also really appreciate the commission's due diligence in looking at the long-term infrastructure costs of this kind of growth and what that is going to cost the city over the long term to maintain all of the infrastructure for that. So I urge you to be very cautious and judicial in making these decisions, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Next on the list is James Willet. James, could you please begin with your name and address for the record?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is James Willet. I live at one oh eight South F in our beautiful city of Livingston. I have I guess in transparency, I was also on the Guiding Principles Ad hoc Committee this summer. Just wrapping up. So I've had a chance to look at this growth policy and the smart, smart growth plan, and this subdivision runs counter to both of those now at this time, fine timeframe, excuse me. So technically, I guess they have everything that they need, but technically a tomato is a fruit, and you wouldn't put that in fruit salad. This just doesn't feel like it has the rhythm of the alley to me. It doesn't feel like it is fitting in with Livingston values. It feels like a tertiary downtown. And we know that we can't, we can't do that and support a thriving downtown. So those reasons alone should be paused for our commissioner to vote for this thing. But then you look at the environmental impact for a wetland area that's up there. I know there's geese that are all over the place up there. We see the antelope breeding ground up there, so there's a lot of environmental issues with this that would be negatively impacted as I could see them. So I'm just gonna be real brief and say that I hope that the commissioners have the fortitude to deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you, James. I'm gonna ask folks to go on mute if I haven't called on them. So it's a little bit easier to hear if only one one screen is off muted at a time. So Frank Schroeder, if you could start with your name and address, please, for the record?
Chair Noots, I'm Frank Schroeder, Board Chair of Friends of Park County, and my address is four seven seven Mill Creek Road, Prey, Montana. In addition to the merits of the subdivision application itself, this proceeding has highlighted some serious issues that need to be addressed. First, it's urgent that the growth policy be translated into revised zoning and changes to your annexation policy and your infrastructure plans. Without those implementation steps, more and more decisions will be made that contradict the growth policy that you and the residents worked so hard to fashion. If that continues to happen, the growth policy will become just like many other plans, fine words that have no effect on reality. Some of you will recall that in June of twenty twenty-one, your staff urged the city commission to not make any changes to the graph, to the draft growth policy to address the question of the consistency of the infrastructure plans and investments with the growth policy. They promised they would address these issues so the city commission didn't need to act, but that is yet to happen. Second, there are some obvious contradictions within the growth policy itself. The growth policy calls for focusing development in the downtown and maintaining traditional compact development patterns. But it uses land use designations that justify zoning hundreds of acres for unlimited commercial development inside the city, but outside downtown and even more land outside the city limits. We summarize these first two issues in the memo we sent to the city commission in May two thousand twenty-one and which was sent to you again in August. Third, you should be receiving more thorough and objective staff reports to aid you in your objective evaluation of subdivision proposals. This should be, in our opinion, a high priority item for your new staff planner. We hope you will take action on these three issues. The first step would be to encourage the planning board to develop recommendations for you on these topics at the earliest opportunity. We remain grateful for your service to our community. And now Chairman Noots, if I might, my wife is here. We share one computer, and I'm wondering if she might just kind of piggyback on.
Well, she can get her own four minutes. Will you share your name with us? Yeah, it is. Can you please share your name with us and your address for the record, and you can get your own four minutes?
Good evening. I am Ann Donahoe, a supporter. Frank's a computer, just went strange.
Oh, sorry. That's because you put your.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, here we go. There we go.
Sorry about that. I'm Ann Donahoe, a supporter of Friends of Park County. My address is four seven seven Mill Creek Road in it in Prey. In addition to conflicts with the growth policy and other defects identified by the planning board, Friends of Park County has identified multiple potential grounds for denial of the subdivision application based on the criteria in the Montana Code annotated seventy-six, three dash six oh eight criteria for local government review subsection three A and the parallel provisions in the city subdivision ordinance, section three dash B dash six B four. Here's a summary of our written testimony related to those criteria. First, the staff report does not provide the facts to show there will be no harmful impacts on agriculture and agriculture water facilities on the neighboring farm property, wildlife, and habitat, and on natural resources, including the wetland and on air quality and on public safety, especially buyer risk. Please see the letter from the Montana Department of Fish and Wildlife with respect to the impacts on wildlife and habitat. Nor does the staff report provide relevant and credible information on the impacts on public services or more precisely on taxpayers who are going to be expected to help pay to build and maintain the new roads, water and sewer lines, sidewalks, stormwater facilities, et cetera. Perhaps the city should consider requiring the preparation of a taxpayer impact statement. Second, we identified several instances in which the staff report misrepresented the review criteria in your own ordinance. A decision based on any of those reinterpretations of the actual legal standards would be in error. Third, we believe the application may not qualify for a statutory exemption from the requirement of preparing an environmental assessment. If so, then the application is incomplete and, under our understanding of your ordinance, the application should be denied. I hope you will take the time to read our testimony on these points. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Frank and Ian. All right. Next on the list, I have Jane Kefler. Could you please start by saying your name and address for the record? And then you'll get four minutes. Is Jean still there?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am Jean Kefler. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. Thanks, Jean. Could you start by stating your name and address, please?
Thank you. Jean Kefler, ten ten Swingly Road, Livingston. Also, a co-founder and board member of Friends of Park County. Madam Chair and commission members, Friends of Park County supports the testimony of the many individuals who have already been heard and probably some yet to be heard, who are urging you to to deny this application and to support the recommendation of your planning commission. In the extensive written testimony that we submitted last week to the commission, we explained why we believe the city is required not only by Montana Code, but also by your own subdivision ordinance to give serious consideration to your twenty twenty-one growth policy as you review this Mountain View subdivision application. In our written testimony, we listed thirteen separate goals, objectives, and strategies in the growth policy that the subdivision and resulting development of the subdivision lots will violate. For these reasons, as well as the other violations of your subdivision ordinance and state law, just summarized by Ann Donahoe, we urge you to follow the recommendation of the planning board. Now, permit me to underscore Madam Chair and commission members that Friends of Park County is not opposed to appropriate additional development on the Printing for Less site. We support appropriate development on that site. We think light manufacturing, warehouse, transportation terminal uses all would be appropriate on this site. These uses are allowed in the highway commercial zone and would not compete with downtown. They are the same types of uses which already exist on the property. And they are what was intended when the city originally annexed the property and zoned it light industrial. As you know, and as you have heard, a big problem with the current highway commercial zoning of the site is that it allows almost anything and everything to be built on the subdivision lots. And not just highway commercial uses like truck stops, convenience stores, and gas stations. The zoning, the highway commercial zoning also allows banks, bars, barbecue shops, burger shops, probably barbecue shops too, store office buildings, medical clinics, department stores, and apartment buildings. These uses belong downtown, not at a freeway interchange a mile away. Finally, you have heard assurances from Mr. Field about his intentions not to allow bad development on the property. We are sure Mr. Field's intentions are sincere. But it is the intentions of the future buyers of the lots that are relevant because they will decide what to do with their property, not Mr. Field. Thank you again for your service. Thank you very much for considering our testimony.
Thank you, Jean. Does anyone else want to give public comments on the Mountain View subdivision preliminary plat approval? Anyone from the public? If you do, you can raise your hand, or you can put your name in the chat. All right, I see Nick Runyon is back. Nick, welcome, and please just start by saying your name and your address for the record.
Hello, my name is Nick Runyon. I am a Bozeman resident, but I'm also the CEO of PFL, so can I give one hundred PFL way as my address? Does that work?
Yeah.
All right, well, I'm representing the employees of PFL tonight. So on behalf of PFL and our three hundred and seventeen employees, I want to start by saying I thank this commission. Thank you for continuing to uphold the interests of the city of Livingston and its citizens. Thank you for making decisions and carefully considering the future of the city of Livingston. We support that good work at PFL. Similar to this commission, PFL and our leadership share the concerns for our city, the downtown, and we consider Livingston and its citizens as stakeholders in every decision that we make.
I don't know how to raise my hand.
Sorry, I thought somebody said something. I don't know if many are aware of this, but since nineteen ninety-six, our mission has been stated as follows. To build a healthy, growing company that rewards its employees, community, and investors by helping our customers and partners be successful. The interests of our employees and community have always been placed above the interests of our investors. I feel the need to express this because people have kind of informally been referring to this as the Printing for Less project or the PFL project. So I want to make sure that people understand where we stand on these issues. For eighteen years, we have intentionally aligned our interests with many of those expressed in this meeting tonight. Personally, I spend a lot of money in our downtown area, and that's not going to change. That money looks like breakfasts, lunches, dinners, hosting our employees, our investors, and stakeholders in local hotels. I don't expect any of that to change because our downtown environment has unique appeal, and it's that appeal that draws many of our employees and our fellow citizens to the Livingston area. So kind of with that as a backdrop, I invite the commission and those present from the Livingston public to join PFL in recommending the approval of the Mountain View subdivision preliminary plat. Approval of this plat will open the door to Livingston and its historic downtown from the west side of the city. New building opportunities will benefit thousands within the Livingston community and present opportunities for new tax revenue, all of which we share in that benefit. To the comments about land use, I think that we can all state our intentions, but those are really out of the hands of the developer. As many have mentioned, I just, I kind of want to double click on that point. And I also want to state that those are zoning issues, and I would gladly support this commission in future conversations when issues of zoning are the topic of conversation. But I would encourage you to approve the subdivision based on the merits of the subdivision plan that's been put forward tonight. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Nick. Before we move on, I need a motion to extend the meeting from the commission.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting.
A motion by Kale. And second by Lyons. Let's do a roll call, because sometimes it's hard to hear.
Chair Nudes.
Or?
Vice Chair Kale.
Or?
Commissioner Friedman.
Or?
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or?
Commissioner Lyons.
Or?
Motion passes to extend the meeting. Thank you, staff, for helping me remember, or for reminding me, rather. Um, I want
Chair Nudes, I think that Edwin Johnson is trying to make your comment, so I just wanted
Thank you so much. You are correct, and also staff's like that for me. So I do see your hand up, Ken, but first we're going to go to Edwin Johnson was in the queue. So Edwin, I will invite you to give public comment. Please just begin by stating your name and address for the record.
Edwin Johnson, 80 Mulholland Road. I live in Southern Park County. And I do know that the Friends of Park County are also very concerned about development in the Paradise Valley and the rest of the county. I believe that if Livingston wants to have workforce housing, they may want to do it inside the City of Livingston because you will run into considerable opposition creating workforce housing outside this, outside in the Paradise Valley or anywhere else in Park County from environmentalist groups. So it's best to get your development inside the City of Livingston while you can because outside the county, outside in the rest of the county, it's going to be pretty tough for you to develop workforce housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Edwin. Next up is Ken Cochran. Can you please start by saying your name and address?
Yes, good evening. I am Ken Cochran. I rely, reside at 60 Majestic Ridge Trail in Livingston. I am also a founding director of Friends of Park County. I just want to reemphasize the statements and endorse them that were made by Ann Donahue, Frank Schroeder, and Jean Kefler. I also endorse the statements made by other citizens of the county who have questioned or opposed the approval of this motion to approve the Mountain View subdivision. I hope you are aware that Friends of Park County on September 30th submitted a detailed 15-page opposition, which has been echoed by many individuals who have testified tonight. And I hope that in your consideration, you take into account all the reasons we've set forth why this proposal is contrary to the growth policy and contrary to the best interests of Livingston and Park County in the totality. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. All right. Need more public comment on the Mountain View subdivision preliminary plat approval? I have a hard time finding the hand icon to raise or putting your name in the chat. You can come off of mute. Just let me know. So to make sure everyone gets a chance that wants to give a comment. Last call for public comment for the Mountain View subdivision. All right, I don't see any. Some closing public comments for the Mountain View subdivision. Public comments closed. Go back to my notes. Right. All right, so commissioners. We've gotten our questions answered. We've heard public comment. We're almost ready to deliberate, but first I want to do two things. The first thing is, do any commissioners have follow-up questions based on public comment? Any questions that they want to get answered? I have just one. I don't see Mrs. Lowry. Just want to make sure she's here. Okay, there she is. Hi. Screens pop around. Um, I do have a question about the environmental assessment and if that was a requirement for the application for this subdivision application.
I do not believe so, but I would defer to one of my esteemed colleagues for verification of that fact, but I do not believe it is a requirement.
Okay. So did you want to call on somebody or?
Either Courtney or Jim. Probably a Jim question.
Thank you, Lisa. Yes, staff has determined that because of the nature of our growth policy of the the fact that the new growth policy is as detailed and as complete as it is, there's a section that exempts subdivision in the subdivision statute from environmental assessment and two other things that maybe Courtney can help me with. I don't have the statute in front of me.
I'm looking for it. Just give me a minute.
If I can chime in, I see.
Just, is that, I just want to make sure that's okay because city staff has the floor. Are you okay with that, Ms. Lowry, if we? Or would you prefer we just wait for the city attorney?
As long as we make sure we come back to the city attorney to finish that question.
Yes, we can. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Lyons.
Oh, I just wanted to point out, I'm seeing that there's an exemption for preparation and environmental assessment for a first minor subdivision exception. So that might be what staff is referring to, but this would, this is a major subdivision, not a minor. But I'm happy to hear staff's opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. Okay. And if, and if we need more time, we can always pause. I I do want the city staff to be able to answer questions. And if we need to take a pause or go on a break in order to do that, I'm comfortable with that as well. So Mrs. Lowry, I'll just leave it to you to tell me what you need on your end.
Will do.
Thank you.
Do we want to take other questions while Courtney is researching that and just in the interest of of time, seeing how it's?
Sure, we can do that. Thank you. Um, let's see. So commissioners, that was a question that I had a follow-up based on the comments from the public. Did any of you have questions that you wanted to ask based on the public comment? Anything additional you want answered before we move into deliberations? And it's okay if the answer is no, I just want to give you a chance. Commissioner Lyons, you have the floor.
So we heard a public comment about the impact on the environment and wildlife, which is, those are those are some of the six criteria, major criteria for reviewing a subdivision. And I'm remembering now that Fish Wildlife and Parks and Parks said that the area is used for for a variety of big game. I won't go go through their list. And they, they suggested a condition that open space be blocked up, meaning basically that it, that there's connectivity in the open space. I'm not, I don't think that my interpretation of the map leads me to believe that it's blocked up. There's, there's developed parcels to the south of the open space. So I was kind of curious what the, the thinking of staff is there.
Okay, Mrs. Lowry, is that question clear?
Did you say that you did not think it was blocked off or that you did?
So I believe that Commissioner Lyons is saying that the recommendation would be that open spaces are connected and it appears on the subdivision plat that they are not connected, that there's actually lots available for development on the plat between open spaces.
I would defer to, to Jim Woodhall on this. He's been intimately involved in this from the beginning, so Director Woodhall, do you have an answer for that that we can provide now?
I was researching last question. Could you repeat this one?
Sorry. Commissioner Lyons, I want to make sure I capture it correctly. So if you could please repeat your question?
Sure. So the, the letter from Fish Wild and Parks suggested that that open space be blocked up to provide for connectivity for, for a large game. And there's one open space being proposed, but it's impeded from the south by developed parcels. And I'm just kind of curious what the, what the staff's position is on whether or not the the way that this subdivision is proposed is, is satisfying the suggestion of Fish Wildlife and Park.
Commissioner Lyons, the only answer I've got for that is I'm unaware of a, of a standing city policy that would address that short of the quantity of open space required under the subdivision regulations.
So, so you're saying what, what they're asking for is beyond the ability of the city to require?
That is not what I'm implying. That may be the case, but I, I don't know the answer to that at this point. I believe that may be under the purview of the city commission.
Okay, thank you.
Think I have an answer for your question.
Chair Nudes.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Courtney?
The local option development regulations and exemptions in 763509 talk about where the governing body has adopted a growth policy and where there are exemptions to the requirement for a environmental assessment, which is also found in 763504 with a reflection back to 763509.
And are you able to give us the interpretation of what Director Woodhall was saying, referencing those?
Basically, because we have a growth policy and our subdivision regulations have the detail that they have, the environmental assessment is not required.
So it looks like that is a part three and then letter I or something like that, 3E I, is that the subsections?
I was giving you state code. I'm not sure what you're quoting back to me.
I'm reading state code. So 76-3-509 has several sections, so I'm just trying to follow along. It looks like maybe you're referring to 76-3-509, part three, letter E.
It's actually part one.
Okay, part one.
And then sub-part three.
Sub-part three. Okay, thank you. That's what I was looking for. Thank you. Commissioner Lyons, does that answer your question? This was your question.
So it sounds like the answer to my question is if we have a growth policy, there's no need for an environmental assessment.
That's a simplification, but yes, it's a combination of the growth policy and the subdivision regulations that create that exemption.
Then Attorney Long, would you please just distinguish for me the difference between a cluster development and a subdivision? Because it looks like that's in reference to a cluster development and that's not what I'm understanding that we're reviewing here.
So if you look at 763504 and it talks about the subdivision regulations adopted must comply with the requirements and accept as in the following sections under 1B require the subdivision provider to submit the governing body an environmental assessment. So it's the combination of the subdivision regulations and the growth policy. There may be an additional statute or two that apply, but I haven't gone down that rabbit hole any farther than this to try to provide you an answer to your question as timely as possible.
I, that's clear as it can be, it looks like for now. So thank you.
And that, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lyons, that might actually have been originally my question, but then I think we, I got confused when we went back and forth. So, and commissioners, any other follow-up questions based on public comments? Okay, I don't see any other follow-up questions, so let's go back to process. Thank you, staff for answering all those. Okay. The next thing before we deliberate, Commissioner Friedman already did this, but before we begin, we need to disclose any ex parte communication. In other words, has anyone had written, sorry, I might be too far away from the computer. Has anyone had written verbal or any kind of contact with the developers, proponents or opponents since the subdivision application was submitted to the city for consideration? Commissioners and Commissioner Friedman already disclosed. But any of the rest of the commissioners?
Chair Nudes.
Vice Chair Kale.
I would like to disclose that I facilitated a public meeting this Saturday in the county. Mr. Field was at that meeting. And during that meeting, he did talk to the folks in that meeting about his subdivision. The meeting was not about his subdivision. It was about a completely different topic. But he did talk about it at that point. I made no comments back to him in, in any way during that process, but did want to disclose that I was at a public meeting in which he attended as well.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kale. Any other commissioners?
Yes, Madam Chair. On August 29th, I spent an hour with Mr. Field regarding the subdivision and and basically showing the layout of it, stuff like that. That'll you.
Any other commissioners? Okay, I want to disclose that Mr. Field reached out to me on September 1st and wanted to sit down with me. I emailed him back and explained my understanding of ex parte communication according to the Montana Municipal Officials Handbook. On page 49 indicates that the governing body, which includes myself, should not be meeting with proponents or opponents of a developer's pending board land use application. It's my understanding that Mr. Field and his business was currently with an application proposal before the planning board. So at that time, I declined to meet with him according to the best practices under the law and invited him to join us at the city commission meeting and also invited him to reach out to the interim city manager, who I CC'd in the email, to discuss the pending land use application. Is there any other ex parte communication that people would like to disclose before we move to deliberation? All right, then we can move into deliberation, commissioners. Who would like to go first?
Madam Chair, I think we lost Commissioner Lyons.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lyons, can you hear us all right?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, um, we're entering our deliberation portion, so wondering, is there a Commissioner that wants to go first?
Chair Noots, I can go first.
Yeah, let me, let me make one disclaimer, I want to make sure to state something on the record. So our decision, first of all, can't be arbitrary and capricious. Commissioners need to cite Montana Code annotated, the Livingston subdivision regulations, allowed uses in the highway, commercial zone, and/or the growth policy or any other relevant law when we're making fatigues of this subdivision. So I just wanted to make sure to get that on the record as well. Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Kiel, you have the floor.
Thank you, um, I am, I'm just gonna, I prepared sort of a list so that I'm making sure that I am following the regulations and rules and citing, um, my, my comments, um, as we move, uh, as I move through, um, my, my thoughts and comments about the Mountain View subdivision. Um, so starting with Montana Code annotated seventy-six-three-six-oh-eight, criteria for law, um, government review, um, it's talking about the local impact, so impacts on local services. We know that new development does not pay for itself when it comes to long-term maintenance and upkeep of new services. The city of Livingston is currently not able to maintain our historic and, and current infrastructure. Our sewer lines are being infiltrated by groundwater and we have water lines to residents that are failing. By adding additional water and sewer lines so far up at the city center, we will be adding an additional burden to cities, to the current city residents. The city also has to prepare for the added cost of mitigating our stormwater citywide as we approach a population of ten thousand residents. Our funds need to be used for our current maintenance needs first. Uh, this is why the growth policy prioritizes infill as a way to mitigate these costs to the current, to the city and its current residents. Um, the applicants and city staff, fact-to-finding have not fully or satisfactorily addressed the above issues. Impacts on wildlife and wildlife habitat. Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks has stated that the area is used by big game, especially pronghorn, as well as black bear, mountain lions, and non-game species. The applicant city staff has not addressed these issues fully or offered any mitigation strategies like providing safe wildlife passage corridors, wildlife friendly, wildlife friendly fencing, and bear-proof garbage cans. Montana Code annotated seventy-six-one-six-oh-five. And so I'm going to mention this because I'm, I'm still concerned about something, so. In this, it talks about a governing body may not withhold, deny, or impose, oh, excuse me, um, a governing body may not withhold, deny, or impose conditions or any land use approval for authorities to act based solely on the compliance with the growth policy adopted pursuant to this chapter. While the growth policy cannot be used to solely approve or deny any land use, it can be used to provide additional grounds for a decision. Per city of Livingston subdivision regulation, um, considering the evidence, in making its decision to approve, conditional approve or deny a proposed subdivision, the governing body may consider the following as applicable. Uh, goals, objectives, and strategies of the growth policy that the Montana View, Mountain View subdivision do not comply with. Um, I would just like to remind folks that the growth policy is a comprehensive vision for our community and that reflects the work of many, many of our Livingston residents. These are the objectives and goals that I have, um, pointed out that, um, do not comport, um. These are, these are issues with the growth policy, so. Objective two-one-one, establish community gateways to indicate entrances into Livingston and celebrate its character. Objective six-two-three, make a good impression to visitors. Well, I know that Mr. Fields would agree with these objectives and wants to make this happen. His word alone is not good enough, since the decisions we are making run with the land and property ownership can change at any time. No conditions have been put in place to assure this will happen. Um, and I'm elaborating a little bit, I, I truly know that Mr. Field really cares about this community and wants to see the best for it. And if he was actually the developer developing this, this subdivision, then I would feel more comfortable knowing that, that he would do the right thing for the city, but putting the lots up on the open market, um, and just allowing things to happen is not a good insurance. Um, and it, it's quite actually upsetting to me. I would love to see this subdivision, um, have some, some, some more thought to it, um, and, and I just, I don't think that that's happened here. Goal three-point-one, prioritize infill over expansion by taking advantage of existing and planned infrastructure such as transportation, energy, water, and sewer facilities. Strategy three-one-one-four, promote any growth that maintains the compact historic development patterns in the cities, in the historic city center. Goal three-point-four, encourage the responsibility of Livingston by evaluating proposed development against the ten principles of smart growth. Objective four-three-three, preserve the night skies as well as the natural scenic views. Objective six-one-one, support existing local businesses. Objective six-one-five, plan for and attract new investment into the downtown district to support local businesses. Unfortunately, the commission did not receive any ana- analysis from the staff or the applicant about the proposed, how, how this proposal meets our twenty-twenty-one growth policy. Montana Code annotated seventy-six-three-six-oh-four, um. This is talking about the governing bodies should collect public comment submitted at hearings or hearings regarding the information presented, uh, presented pursuant to seventy-six-three-six-two-two and shall make any comments submitted or summary of the comments submitted available to the subdivision within thirty days. This is really talking about, collecting public comments during the public hearing. And the commission did not receive or given a summary of the public comment received at the planning board meetings. Um, and so I, I am concerned that we've missed some public comments at the commission that we didn't get a summary of from the city staff. Um, and so that, that makes me a bit concerned. And just some last comments. Well, it has been mentioned several times by the applicant in public meetings that they assure, that they assume that, that some to many of these lots will be developed as residential. Cause I've heard that from the applicants, I've heard it at public meetings. Um, the applicant has not designated to specific, excuse me, specific areas of the subdivision for specific types of development. This makes it difficult to make a decision on this application. If this will be a residential subdivision, the application in its current state cannot be evaluated against the Livingston subdivision regulations and Montana statute. I have concerns about the lack of alleys, the depths of the lots, and the lack of specifically designated parkland dedication. And my one other concern is that I noticed that lot number twenty-five has no street access. So I'm concerned about public safety and being able to get, um, fire trucks or other things back to that lot if there was a fire. Those are my comments, not the usual way I would make comments, but, um, just wanted to make sure I was following process.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair Kiel. Um, I guess I can, if no other Commissioners want to go, do any other Commissioners want to give comment? I see, uh, Commissioner, you're locked.
You can go ahead.
Okay, Commissioner Lyons and then, um, Commissioner Friedman, you can go after that. So Commissioner Lyons, you want to go ahead, you have the floor?
Great, so I, I appreciate, uh, Vice, Vice Chair Kiel's comments and, um, her covering the specific elements that, um, that the, this development, um, the ways in which the development does not comport with the growth policy. Um, that was very, um, comprehensively covered in the planning board meeting. I think it's also been pretty comprehensively covered by comment, public comment. Um, and then I think that Vice Chair Kiel did a great job of kind of connecting those comments to actual, um, goals, objectives, and strategies from, from the growth policy. So I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm not even, I'm not going to speak to anything regarding the growth policy and I'm going to focus on, on just the primary criteria for subdivision review as it's laid out in MCA. Uh, I'm not going to quote, uh, the subsections of MCA, I think that, that staff can, um, when they're, when they're producing our findings of fact, can, can allocate, um, my comments to the appropriate, um, primary criteria. But, uh, first one that I'm going to talk about is, um, the provision of public services. So I was asking, um, Mr. Nauman about the, about, um, trip generation and, and trip generation is a really fancy transportation, um, term for, for traffic and the traffic that's produced by specific um, developments and land uses. Um, and in the, in the, the subdivision application that we received, uh, there was an estimation of the, of the number of daily trips that would be produced by the subdivision. Um, and I think I actually remember off the top of my head that figure was, uh, ten thousand three hundred and thirty-three trips. Uh, uh, sorry, ten thousand and three hundred trips. Um, I've actually, uh, published two articles in scholarly journals on trip generation and different kinds of developments. Um, and so I, I used, uh, some of my expertise to see how that might compare, um, with the current trip generation from Printing for Less. So we kind of get a sense of what, like, what ten thousand trips, ten thousand three hundred trips means. The current, um, the current trip generation from, eh, from my best estimate, um, from Printing for Less is fifteen hundred trips. That's the biggest employer in Livingston. And that development as it currently is, and this, this is prior to the FedEx, um, addition. But that, it's fifteen hundred trips a day, so we're talking about almost a tenfold increase in the number of daily trips being generated by this new center that would be developed in, in Livingston. Um, just for a little bit of text, I'm going to read those, those proposed land uses that, um, that this trip generation estimate was, um, was created from. So again, this is from the subdivision application. This is what they, this is their best estimate of the types of, um, of land uses and development that will happen after they, um, as, as Mr. Field mentioned, put it to the open market and let the market decide. Um, their, their best estimate is a hotel, a fifty, a fifty-room hotel. Um, convenience store, gas station with twenty vehicle fueling positions, a coffee slash donut shop slash drive-through window, uh, two of, two thousand square feet of that type of establishment. A fast food restaurant with, with a drive-through window, five thousand square feet of that type of development. General light industrial, uh, a hundred and seventy-three thousand square feet of that type of development. And then one multifamily housing complex of fifty-two dwelling units. Um, and so, so those, those land uses is their, as they're estimating here would produce ten, that, over ten thousand daily vehicle trips compared to fifteen hundred that are currently proposed or currently come from the Printing for Less facility. So I mentioned, I asked, uh, Mr. Nauman about, uh, whether or not these level of service, and again, level of service refers to the delay, um, at intersections. Whether the le- level of service estimates incorporate into them closure of, of I ninety. Now, i- it's, it's pretty easy when, um, when you live in Bozeman or when you're talking about potentially, uh, making a lot of money on a development to say, to, to, to discount, um, those days in Livingston in the winter when, when the freeway gets closed. But we've, we've all been there and we know what that's like. Now imagine increasing the traffic from, from this part that this, this corner of Livingston, which is where all of that traffic is diverted through. Imagine increasing the trips there by, by ten times. That would be, in my opinion, an untenable impact on local services. So that, that is, that's my position that, that the traffic generated or potentially generated by this development would create, um, an untenable impact on, on public services. Um, another, another, uh, primary criteria is public safety. I would relate this untenable traffic situation to public safety as well. Um, uh, I, I don't have to explain that, that more, more traffic in a, in a high-speed area of town is likely to lead to public safety concerns, but again, increasing traffic by tenfold, um, I think could also have an adverse impact on public safety. Um, so those are, those are, uh, my findings related to the primary cri- criteria. There's one other issue that I see here, which is that, in my opinion, this subdivision proposal does not actually comport with our subdivision regulations and as such would require a variance in order to, to, to be considered. Um, had, we, we, we somewhat got into this, uh, with, with Mr. Nauman, uh, but I'm going to bring up this, uh, this subdivision regulation. This is from Livingston subdivision regulations and it says that blocks must be wide enough to allow for two tiers of lots unless a narrower configuration is essential to provide separation of residential development from traffic, traffic arteries or to overcome specific disadvantages of topography and orientation or unless the governing body approves a design consisting of irregularly shaped blocks indented by cul-de-sacs. So, um, the, the planner suggested that the, the, the acting word here was unless. Um, the blocks must be wide enough to allow for two tiers unless. It's my opinion actually that the, the mo- the acting word here is essential. Blocks must be wide enough to allow for two year, two tiers of lots. Um, unless an error configuration is essential to provide separation. Now, when I look at this and, and, and granted, I asked whether or not there was any explanation of, of whether, of why this subdivision did not to comply with the subdivision regulation. And the statement was, it, it's not actually stated anywhere in the subdivision application, but it's up to, up to the decision makers to interpret the map that was given. Uh, when I look at the map and I see one acre lots, I see actually space to put two tiers of lots in there. Uh, I, my understanding of the highway commercial zoning is that, that the, the minimum lot size is thirty-five hundred square feet. I think you could fit many thirty-five hundred square foot lots into those, those one acre, one acre lots. So I'm not compelled that it is essential, um, that, that, um, the single depth of lots is essential. In fact, I, I don't think it's essential at all, and I think that at the very minimum, the, the requester would have to come to the planning board and request a variance. Um, so, so that, that's, those are my criteria based upon the primary criteria and, and subdivision regulations. Um, and I will yield my time, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. I believe Commissioner Schwartz, you are next.
Okay, I'm going to keep it relatively short and sweet, um. It sounds like nobody wants any development out there. Um, what I haven't heard from anyone is if we can't, if can't develop out there, where, I keep hearing about downtown, is there any land downtown that I don't know about that can be developed? Um, if so, I'd like, like to know about it. Um, there's ninety pages of, uh, of wetland delineation in this report, um, and, uh, maybe Ms. Brabo missed that, but, um, they do show the, um, ponds, not lakes, the Fish Wildlife Service, or, um, Wildlife Service calls and ponds and, uh, the delineation looks very, very good and everything else. Um, so due diligence has been done there. Um, what else hasn't been addressed is, um, you know, we have a salvage yard out there, what's the impact of that? Nobody brings that up, or, you know, the existing truck stop, which is, you know, borders the wetlands. Um, I respect all the common, comments that have been made, um, throughout this. And, uh, I've spent a lot of time with Courtney regarding, um, legal issues that have been brought up and I think she's, um, answered them adequately for me. I'm no expert on the law, so I do have to, you know, rely on our staff for that. And one other thing I, I'd like to mention, I support her downtown. Every major appliance I bought in this town until last week, I needed a new dishwasher. I had to go to Bozeman. But everything else, at one time I was able to buy downtown. And, and we've invested a lot of money in making downtown attractive with those streets and sidewalks and stuff like that. And with, and with a vibrant downtown that we have, people will come. I have no doubt about it. The factor matter is, this is zone highway commercial. Do I like the whole project? Not necessarily, but legally. We're bound, I believe, to, to approve this. All my, my questions have been, I, you know, there's been some great, you know, you know, questions asked and raised and answered. But at this point, I'm satisfied that the developer or the supervisor has met their burden. So with that, I'll yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Friedman, did you have words you wanted to say?
I concur with everything that Quentin just said. My next remark is I think it's time to go home. How are you?
All right, thank you. First, I wanna, so it's my turn. So first I want to say my decision and comments are not based on where else to develop in Livingston, but it's based on the application and information before us and presented to us as commissioners. Furthermore, it's based on state laws and local, local laws. It's not arbitrary and capricious. Did you have a question, Commissioner Friedman or Commissioner Schwartz? Okay. I also want to comment that the salvage yard and the truck stop are not in the city limits and not our jurisdiction. So I won't be commenting on those either. I'm going through the Montana State Code, Montana Land Use and Planing statutes. For my comments, I'm going to begin responding to some of the information that we're required to look over in seventy-six dash three dash zero eight. So I, I'll try not to be repetitive. I believe that Commissioner Cale already talked about the public hearing comments and some rate were not included. So I don't need to talk about that. Impacts on local services, increase in infrastructure to, I believe there'd be an increase in infrastructure to maintain like Vice Chair, Vice Chair Cale already mentioned. And it's a significant distance from the rest of the land developed in the city, which also increases the cost to maintain it. I also want to comment that staff reports is that the staff report or the staff finding the facts that no SIDs would be created. However, the planning and building director suggested a waiver for SID to create, to quote, create pedestrian slash bicycle connectivity from this subdivision to the city's existing trail system, end quote. And at the public hearing, the Public Works Director suggested a condition that, quote, a waiver for SID for any water sewer, sewer system improvements to provide additional capacity from the city system, end quote. So the findings of facts that no SID is yet to have been suggested. Furthermore, it's unclear that the subdivision and the water loop that relates to the subdivision and how much financial impact local, current local residents would endure with the associated costs. Furthermore, this subdivision could be one hundred percent residential because it isn't allowed to be used in highly commercial and it doesn't have the alleys as required by our city subdivision regulations. Now, in regards to the natural environment section, there are steep slopes on grassy areas near the interstate, which is a known fire hazard in Montana during our dry ice times of the year. In addition, there are wetlands in this subdivision, so it's likely that surface water contamination from runoff at maximum buildout could contaminate surface waters, especially given that highway commercial is a very permissive zone with many potential vectors after full buildout to negatively impact water runoffs. Findings of facts that this is not a high-wind area, but I think that we can all agree in Livingston that this is absolutely a high-wind area even by Livingston standards, and there are no mitigation factors offered. For the effect on wildlife and wildlife habitat, according to the FWP letter, the area is used for pronghorn black bears and mountain lions. There is a recommendation to use open space for wildlife passage corridors, but the subdivision design does not have the open spaces connected. For effects on public health and safety, the subdivision is subject to hazardous conditions due to the interstate highway and potentially the railroad. This was mentioned in the subdivision application. It is adjacent and down, downhill from I ninety, and it also does get rerouted interstate traffic like Commissioner Lyons mentioned. And this traffic city did not take this into account. I'm also concerned about the open space on Lot Twenty-Five, which the developer in their application describes as, quote, hilly grassland. It's actually not connected to a road. It's landlocked between adjacent lots and the interstate, which means if there's fire, there's no obvious emergency vehicle access. And it's just a reminder that the fires that we've had in Livingston over the past several years, most of them in town have been on hilly grasslands. Also, tonight we learned that the plot was described as being for trails, this particular plot of land. But there is no public ac- access to this land other than entering near the interstate or trespassing on private land, as far as I can tell. So that is definitely a health and safety concern. Furthermore, I wanna I want to address Montana Code annotated seventy-six dash three dash six two one eight, Part A, which discusses that we, the governing body, can require parkland when zoning regulations permit condominiums or other multifamily dwellings or the lots are within the boundaries of the municipality. Open space does not equal parkland dedication. There are no other parklands in this part of town, which is a great concern. I don't need to add anything about the growth policy. I feel like that was covered. I would certainly, for one, as a commissioner, like to see preliminary flat designs that were adhering to the law, both state law and local law, and meeting the requirements that we set forth as an elected body. Clearly, there's many concerns that this does not comply with our local regulations and state regulations as myself and a couple other commissioners have noted. So all commissioners have had a chance to talk. I will offer see if any other commissioners want to talk. Otherwise, I believe we have deliberated fully.
Chair Noots.
Yes, Vice Chair Cale.
I I would like to say that I am not against developments. But I do not believe that this subdivision meets all the regulations. We don't know what will happen out there. And as we've heard from so many public comments this evening, that's a great concern to the, to many of our citizens. I, I think that Andrew Field and PFL have been, have done great things for our community. And I appreciate that tremendously. That Mr. Field is not going to develop this. He's just gonna sell these flats. We don't know what's gonna happen. So that, that's concerning. Yes, we need housing. And gee, I wish that, you know, this had been divided up and shown where the housing was gonna be and that we could make sure that, that this was gonna work. So I, I, I just wanted to state, to state that. But I do have concerns about the city's ability to maintain that much, that much infrastructure outside of, that far outside of the city center. It'll be a burden on, on the citizens of Livingston. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cale. That actually reminds me of another thing that I wanted to comment on. This came up at a previous subdivision, subdivision application in Livingston, where there was a large amount of residential properties proposed right next to the interstate and we know that that's possible in highway commercial zone and there's no factors mitigating the impacts of potential risks, which were outlined in the subdivision application, as I previously stated. Previously stated, there is no mitigating factors for people who would live right next to the interstate. There is no, there's nothing in here showing that they would do anything to improve the health and the safety of any developments, high-density developments. Putting a lot of people right next to known risks. So that was another, another point that I wanted to make. And I and I, like you, want nothing more than high-quality housing for our for our community. And for folks that would say we're anti-development, I would say our record doesn't show that. We've voted, we voted to change zoning and and zone things so the development can happen in Livingston. So I know that's a, it's an easy, it's an easy thing to say, but our record just doesn't reflect that as a commission. That's all that I have to say about that. Commissioners, anything else before we move this to a vote? All right, so we have a motion by Schwartz to approve with the conditions on page one twenty-four and one twenty-five in the staff report and a second by Friedman. We've gone through. Oh, and there is one question I want to ask just for process. So Mrs. Lowey, sorry, I need to face the computer so you can hear me. Are we, are we, the commission still, oh, can you hear me? Okay. Are we, the commission, still able to vote on this subdivision without the information presented to the commission? And without the comments being responded to as indicated in Montana Code seventy-six dash three dash six oh four? Are we, so we're legally sound to vote on it, even though we don't, we haven't done that or had those comments submitted to us? Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to get that clarity before we move forward. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Hearing no other commissioner comments. Roll call, please.
Chair Noots.
No.
Vice Chair Cale?
No.
Commissioner Friedman?
Or.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Or.
Commissioner Lyons?
Against.
Motion fails. Now we are moving on to action item E. Discuss, approve, deny, canceling the October eighteenth regular commission meeting. Mrs. Lowey.
Commissioner Lyons has his hands up. I don't know if you want to address that first.
Oh, thank you.
If it was on the prior.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Thank you for flagging it. Commissioner Lyons.
Thank you, Mrs. Lowey, Chair Noots. So we, we just voted against against a motion, but, but that, we haven't actually made a motion or a decision, as I understand it. Like, don't we need to, don't we need to vote? Like, do we, do we need to have a vote to sustain the recommendation of the planning board? Or is just the, the no vote on, on the approval, does that function as a denial? Does that make sense? We were, because you
Yes.
Chair Noots mentioned that we need to make, we, we need to put things forward in the affirmative.
Oh, yes. So, so my, my understanding is that the, we just denied the subdivision with that vote. But what I would say is Commissioner Lyons and Vice Chair Cale and I, by the end of the week, I would like it if we could email, email your points and your references to the city manager, Mrs. Lowey. So that she has the information for reference for the follow-up work that she's gonna need to do. And you can CC me on it if you'd like. But it'll just make staff time a little bit easier if we help them out in that way. But yes, Commissioner Lyons, does that make sense?
It does. Thank you. Sorry to hold this up.
No, you're fine. So we're moving on to the canceling the October eighteen regular commission meeting. Did I miss anything else or leave? Okay, Mrs. Lowey.
Well, we had talked about actually canceling this meeting. We're going to be moving it to an executive work session because that will be immediately following the city manager interviews on that day. In that meeting, though, the beginning portion of it, we are going to have to deal with a resolution to request the Barca funds. So we will have to do that on that day to be able to get those tax gas funds into us. It has to be filed by November one and we won't have a meeting before then. So that has to be done in that meeting. So we will have to have at least a brief regular meeting and then an executive session.
Okay. Any questions, commissioners? Okay. Just a reminder that the commission will be sharing information, other information about what's happening that day, on a future date as requested by our consultants. So all right. So now, is, there's nothing to vote on then?
No.
Yeah, okay.
So because we'll just notice the meetings like we normally.
Great, thank you. That sounds great. So you'll just make it, you'll make a Zoom auction for that portion then? Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay. Then moving on to city manager comments.
Yes, I would just like to say that there were a couple of comments made this evening that were of concern to me in terms of really, really being harsh towards city staff in terms of, you know, intentionally a misrepresentation in a staff report. We may all have differences of interpretation or differences of opinion. But I am really struggling with the characterization that something was a misrepresentation because that indicates a level of intention that is absolutely not there and never in anything that the staff does. So I just want to kind of make that clear. And, and when we talk about civil discourse, we can certainly all disagree. But we do not need to descend into tax on personal integrity or professionalism of the staff. I just, I have no tolerance for it. So I just wanted to make that clear in my city manager comments tonight, and I wanted to thank you all for the time to do that. So with that, I yield.
Mrs. Lowey, I just want to address this immediately. So I appreciate your comment, and I think this is an example of intent versus impact. I believe that no commissioner's intent was to undermine or say anything that would negatively impact city staff. So I just want to apologize on behalf of the commission if that was the impact. And know that we will do our best to do better moving forward. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Lowey. All right, so I need to, I always have to write out my list of where people sit. Since we are not always in that order on the screen. Okay, so Commissioner Lyons, commissioner comments?
Thanks to everyone for I, I mean, I think that when we have these typical conversations, one of, like, one of the silver linings is that it's really evident that, that people really care about our city. And like, that, 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 that care and that passion is, I think, just like really evident in, in the amount of effort and, and conviction that people bring to these discussions. So I want to thank people for that. If if I made any statements that had an impact of disparaging staff, I, I express my apologies. I don't, I don't remember having done that, but if I did, I, I apologize. I think that these are, these are challenging, these are very, very challenging decisions as commissioners. And we're doing our best to, to research and, and come to conclusions that are informed by the efforts and expertise of the staff as well as the, the information and expertise that we bring to these decisions as well. So and I, and I don't think that the the information and expertise that we bring to these decisions as well. So and I and I don't think that that those things are are in conflict, but rather they're they're working together in in concert. So but again, appreciate the efforts that that everyone's put into making these difficult decisions. And, you know, we we as commissioners make votes, but those votes are informed by the work of countless other people. And so I want to extend my gratitude gratitude to everyone that that helps us to make those decisions because it's a it's a, it's a long and and challenging process that requires the conviction and expertise of everyone. So thanks, thanks to all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. Commissioner Schwartz.
I just want to thank everybody, the public, especially for weighing in and everything this evening. And I do hear you, and I do listen to you. And thank you for the good and robust debate. I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Friedman?
Yeah. Yeah, it's quite an experience. Yeah, it's hard to put words to it. So I just want to thank everybody for hanging in there. With public event and life goes on. So are you?
Thank you, Commissioner Friedman. Vice Chair Cale.
I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners for all the conversations tonight and the staff's assistance through all this. Thank you to the public for all of your comments here in in person and and those emails that you sent in to us. So I do appreciate all of that. I am looking forward to, I know at least a couple of us city commissioners will be attending the Leadership Forty Nine luncheon on Friday. So thank you for that invitation to to us as commissioners, and I I look forward to that as well. I yield.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cale. I want to extend thanks to the public as always for coming, and also I want to thank Mr. Field and his colleagues for entertaining so many questions tonight, in addition to Mrs. Lowey and city staff. There were clearly questions that probably none of us were expecting and difficult to feel, difficult to answer on the spot. So thank you for bringing your expertise to the meeting and helping us weigh through it, process, answering questions, all of it. Yeah. And I already apologized for impact, so hopefully we can make sure that moving forward, we, yeah, we just enter these spaces thoughtfully together, all of us, the public, commission staff, all of us alike. So thank you, everyone, for joining us at this late hour on October fourth. And at this time, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Schwartz and a second by, what's that?
I beat now.
Motion by Schwartz and a second by Cale. All in favor, raise your hand so I can see it and say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, did I get both of you from City Hall?
Aye, aye.
All right, thank you. Aye, aye. So this meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at ten oh three PM. Good night, everyone.